All right, I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019. First of all, is there anyone who would like to speak about anything that is not on the agenda tonight? All right, moving right along then. No INRs, Jeff?
No.
So we'll move right into the continued public hearing for the October Company, seeking a special permit for 41 O'Neill Street. Anyone want to update us on where we are?
Evening. My name is Mark Reed from Heritage Surveys, along with the same team that was here at the previous meeting, with the addition of Bill Cannon, landscape architect, that has been brought onboard, that we're going to speak to you about relative to the landscaping along the bike path. I don't know if it's easier to do it on the board, Jeff? Or...
You can do it on the board. I'll try to pull it up on the screen as we go.
I'd just like to run through some of the changes that have been made to the plans So that based on our meeting, there were concerns about the amount of trees that were being cut along the rail trail. So we took a good hard look at what we could do to modify the plans to provide more of a buffer along the rail trail. So the plans that we submitted and are before you tonight show that we have removed 18 parking spaces, and those parking spaces were along this section of the parking area, which allowed us to still maintain the needs of the company to have 72 parking spaces. So we're requesting a waiver down to 72 parking spaces. And enabled us to move the, maybe I can show you a little bit better on the landscape plan, to move the stormwater system and pavement to provide a 20-foot-wide vegetated buffer along this entire section, starting near the loading dock, and running along the entire section of the rail trail for the project in itself. Bill and I went out and we did an inventory of trees that were located on the property owned by the October Company, and Bill can speak to that, but we have identified on the plans the trees that would be protected, that are healthy. As you know, there are quite a number of trees that were, are either damaged, or just entangled with invasive species, and getting choked out and dying. Those trees are get removed and replaced with additional plantings of trees that are shown on the plan that Bill can expand upon for the project in itself. We are only cutting the trees that are on the property that is owned by the October Company. There are still additional trees that are within the, what is owned by Western Mass Electric, which is part of the rail trail. So there's still vegetation that won't be cut because we can't go in and cut it because it's not, we don't own those trees, along the entire length. Additionally, we've added a row of arborvitae that are behind the building to buffer that and soften up that area. But really, if you go out and take a good look at it, the vegetation along that rail trail is mostly invasive species. Secondly, there's high-tension wires that run down the rail trail. So every year, Western Mass Electric comes in and has a tree service come in and cut vertically. So if you look up at the trees along the rail trail, you'll see that one side's cut bare, and the other sides are, have vegetation on it. And what causes the tree to fail because of storm damage and the amount of cutting, hard cutting they do because of the high-tension wires along the rail trail in itself. So in doing so, we were able to relocate or redesign the stormwater basin. It still handles the 100-year storm event, and we provided that documentation in the letter that we submitted to the board, as well as two additional letters from tie and bond, and that are part of the package. And Dave Harwich is here tonight to can address any questions relative to those letters in themselves. And with that, I'd like to just have Bill talk about the vegetation that we're proposing, which is a change from the last time that we met.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Unless the board has other questions at this time.
Want to listen to Bill? Yeah. I'm sure we can come up with questions later, but we'll let Bill talk first.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you. Again, my name is Bill Cannon, arborvitae architect. I have an office here in the...
I have a microphone.
I'm sorry. My name is Bill Cannon, I'm a Lansky architect. I have an office here in East Hampton. So as Mark explained, I was brought onboard to try to lend another discerning eye to what was going on with the site development. And Mark and I took a close look at the tree line between the development and the bike path, and determined that we could, we could keep intact basically the whole tree line if we could, as Mark explained, eliminate the parking, the surplus parking, and move all the grading that was required for the stormwater management plan. And I think we successfully did that, and in so doing, again, we were able to, and I want to kind of, I can't stress this enough, basically saving the entire vegetative area. Now having said that, it is, I did scrutinize the quality of that vegetative area, and felt that there was considerable, as Mark explained, considerable invasive species in there. There's a lot of, I call it junk, junk trees, that I felt that this time would be worth getting in there and making an effort to clean it up, remove the invasive species, and therefore allow room for some new tree plantings. I didn't feel it was worth the effort of putting new trees in there if we weren't going to tend to the existing conditions out there, because the invasive species just wouldn't, would inundate the new tree plantings. So I thought it was worthwhile to go in there and at least do that. One thing we did want to do was locate, as Mark again mentioned, some of the major existing trees along the October Company's edge, or edge of the tree planting, to get a feeling for where those major trees were with regard to the grading for the stormwater management. And they happen to be right on the edge. We have shown those trees on the plan, and they also kind of demarcated where we think we could put some additional trees. So this plan here proposes to plant 10 additional trees beyond what was originally proposed. And they, we would, I would work with the Lansky contractor in spotting those trees precisely in an area where they could grow and mature, because there are so many other trees out there, and we don't quite know where we're going to have a few open spots and everything else, depending on how much we remove of the invasive species. And we're only talking about invasive stuff. We plan on leaving all the trees there, for the most part, even the trees that Mark had described that had been badly pruned, especially on the side towards the bike path. We just felt it was just worth it to just kind of like leave as much intact as possible there. But to augment that, again, with some additional tree plantings. And so we proposed a variety of native trees, there's a point list on the plan, of 10 additional trees that we will spot and exactly locate, once we've done our due diligence with cleaning up the tree line, and we can spot those trees in relationship with the other existing trees. And also, we want to make sure we get a good feeling of where the grading is going to take place for the stormwater management as well. Some of that stormwater management, the grading for the stormwater management swales, we'll have some control over augmenting that a little bit, so that we can maintain the root systems and stay as far away as we can from the trees, the existing trees along the edge, our edge of that tree line. So that was a little bit of a process that we went through, and we thought we kind of did a responsible job in terms of trying to, one, number one, maintain the existing tree out there, and number two, augmenting it with some new tree plantings. Probably number three is removing some of the real junk stuff in the tree line as well. The other thing that I thought was important is that because the building is so close to the rear setback line, that it was worth of putting a hedge row along that rear property line, just to buffer and soften up the building wall. And we'll plant them, I believe what I expect out are eight to 10 footers on the, on the, on the plan, and we expect those to get, there'll be no pruning of them, we'll just let them grow naturally, they'll get about 25 feet high. And so that should maintain a pretty substantial evergreen hedge and buffer between the building wall and the bike path.
So that's what I was going to ask. So the trees you're preserving are really from the corner of the new proposed building, right? That area, along the side of the building, those trees really are going to have to be removed for the construction, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So I think you mentioned with the arborvitae or the hedge row, it's going to go in at eight to 10 feet?
Yes.
When you plant it?
Yes.
What about the other trees? What's the plan for how, I mean, I think there's stuff on here about how big the trees will be or grow, but how large do you plan on putting them in?
We're going to be installing, I believe it's two...
Two and a half.
Two to two and a half. We maintain the same quality size that some of the original tree plantings were proposed at.
Two and a half what? Inches diameter?
Two and a half.
Two and a half inch caliber?
Two-inch in caliber.
Two and a half inch caliber, okay.
Correct. Now, we, you know, that's not the biggest...
Right.
...size we could, we could probably get, okay? But it's probably, at the time, we're going to try to do the plantings in two stages, so that we can get a jump on the landscaping and the mitigation process in here, planting whatever we can late in the fall, and then pick up on planting in the spring. And there's always an availability issue with plantings. And so I err it on the side of making sure that we could get what, you know, we could guarantee the availability of the plant material that I specified on the plan.
Is there also still the proposed eight-foot-tall fence as well as this?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, that's something that I neglected to mention. So initially, the eight-foot-high fence was going to run for 650 feet, running along this entire section here. By the redesign of the vegetated buffer, we have changed that to 240 feet. So the eight-foot-high fence starts near the corner of the building, it's outlined in red, comes down, goes over to respect the three mature trees that we're saving, and then coming down and stopping in this section here. We, I believe she's maybe sitting in the back at the last meeting, the abutter that lives here really wanted us to maintain that fence, because she said that at nighttime, when the shift changes at two products, she gets the headlights from two products entering O'Neill Street, not from AA...
Gotcha.
But more so from two products across the street. So we respected that request, and still having that eight-foot-high fence to make sure that vehicles that come in, this is our entrance, the fence will be here, they'll make a corner, and then the headlights will be shining this way, and respect her request for that fence.
And so the existing trees would actually be on the rail trail side as well?
Correct.
So the residents would see trees and fence, not just the fence?
Correct.
And I'd like to add, Mark, that we've, we've reload, I've kind of shuffled around some of the tree plantings too. So we actually have tree plantings on our side of the fence as well, to augment the tree planting that we're maintaining on the rail trail side of the fence as well.
That's great.
Right.
Fantastic.
So I think it's a huge improvement...
Definitely.
...in that aspect of it. Yes, unfortunately, because of the building construction, the trees on our property along the rear of the building have to come down.
Yep.
It's not only for construction-related, but it's long-term maintenance of the building. Being on the east side, if you don't remove the trees, you'll get mold and on the side of your building and maintenance issues. The other issue is that we have an infiltration system that runs along the building, because the roof is pitched here, this direction, with gutters. Trees and gutters don't go along too well.
Right.
Especially when they're very close in proximity. So filling up and being a maintenance issue for...
Yeah.
For the October Company, or in itself.
Great.
Okay.
I have reviewed the letter, and the stormwater plan does look right there, in fact, reducing stormwater in the post-production, in the post-construction situation, so that's great.
And there was a memo from the DPW. Mark, have you guys had a chance to look at this about the road moratorium too?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have no issue of using flowable fill to do our one-cut trench that we need to come across the street, actually, I'm sorry, there's two. There's one for the sewer connection for the new building, and one for his drain. So we have no issue with complying with his request.
Okay.
Great.
Any other questions from the board at this point?
I've reviewed it. I think the changes are excellent, really considerate of the neighbors and the community as a whole. I'm ready to approve, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else have any questions before we open it up? Well, so we, well, first of all, anybody else have any comments or questions? If you want to come right up here, name and address, please.
I am David Wigerfeld for Stanley Street, one of the abutters. And unfortunately, I apologize, I had to leave my job in Hollywood to get here, and got here a little late. So I just, I just wanted to understand the line in terms of the arborvitae, because I mean, it sounds great that, you know, everything I heard just now sounded great, and I just, I, in coming in late, I didn't quite catch where they start, how far they run.
So if you look on that plan that's right in front there, so the dark green bar that goes right next to the building? Those are going to be planted at eight to 10-foot arborvitae. So it should run a little bit, little bit past both ends of that building there.
So then we're planting 50 of them at eight feet on center, so that we can allow them to just grow naturally to their maximum height possible. And they'll be located eight feet off of the property line as well, again, for that reason, so that we can allow them just to kind of grow to their natural height and width.
Yeah, and they do, they grow very well, because they don't, they don't really need maintenance, it's true.
Right.
So, but, so, the question I had, that's what I thought looking at this, but I couldn't quite tell, and again, I apologize for being late, but, so are these trees that are here going to be remaining?
So there are, there are a number of trees that are going to be remaining in this. So the dark trees are new trees that are getting planted...
Oh, okay.
...along this 25-foot, or 20-foot buffer. There is a number of existing trees that we located by survey, as well as marked the boundary line out there. Somebody goes out there to see where the boundary line is between...
They have pink things on them?
Yeah.
So those ones are being kept?
So, yes. So those are, they're all flagged?
I flagged them, I flagged them in this, heard the survey group followed behind me and located them.
Yep.
So there's seven existing trees that are going to stay along this section through here, and they're all flagged like you saw.
And so these dark green ones are going to be planted?
Waited.
And what, what type of trees are those going to be?
So, right. Can they...
Well, they're all deciduous trees?
Bill, sorry, can I have you come up to the microphone just so it's recording? Thanks.
Okay. I figure I can answer that better than Mark.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Don't make Mark guess.
Maple?
Yeah, no, we, again, it was my priority to get a diversity of plantings in there. So there, there are a variety of native deciduous trees, there's yellowwood, there's some oaks in there, some additional maples in there, and a few other things too. So we've gotten, we've got more of a diversity in there, which we can always appreciate, because, again, you know, if there's a blight or something happens to a particular species, we're not wiping out the whole, you know, the whole monoculture that one might plant if they were all the same, they were all the same species.
And so I think I said two to two and a half inch caliber trunks to go in. So they won't go in as full-grown trees, but they should grow in and fill that area. I mean, I think that's a reasonable starting size.
They're much easier to plant, especially amongst other trees that we're working on and everything else, rather than trying to pick these deep, you know, caverns for big root balls and everything else.
Which also don't transplant as well, I believe.
Yeah, right. We want, we want 100% survival rate here, type of thing. So, you know, we're going for, you know, trees that are going to be very easily to transplant, as I mentioned before, readily available, so that we, you know, when the time comes, we can implement the plant.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Sure, please, sir.
Hello, Julian Parker Burns, 116 Lovefield Street, directly across basically the two, perhaps three houses that will have the front of the construction. It's been interesting watching how this unfolds over the last couple of years. All of the discussion today has been about the plantings, but how tall is that building that's going to go up, 30 feet away from my house? How tall is, how tall is this building right here? What's the elevation? Because eight to 10 arborvitae placed eight feet away on center leaves tons of space. You can see a lot. Also, all the arborvitae that have been planted in the past, before I got there, years have not been maintained, and they're short, stumpy little things. The folks further up can see them better. You have a good example of them down here, where they're just short little squats. So how high is that elevation?
My name is Gary Dayharsh with One Development and Construction. The building at its highest point is 28 feet tall.
Okay. And how long will it take, at best, a 10-foot tree to cover that, not just in height, but in girth? How many years?
One foot here?
I'm not...
Sorry, Bill. Got to get back up.
So after the, there's going to be, have to be an establishment period. Usually it's about two years.
Yeah.
At which time, the planting, the plants are still growing a little bit.
Yeah.
By, but I would say by the end of the third, if they're healthy...
Yeah.
...they're going to increase by two feet.
Okay.
And they're going to increase by a foot in diameter on either side of it.
Got it.
So, you know, I mean, there's going to have to be some attention paid, I believe, by AA to water the plants and make sure they survive. It's all going to be part of the guarantee that's required by the landscape contractor to install these plants and everything else. Well, there's no point in, you know, buying plants after the growing, after the winter or something, you know, they're going to die and everything else.
Yeah.
We usually, we always require a guarantee from the landscape contractor that they are going to be replaced.
Was there a guarantee on the previous plantings that were done for the previous promises?
Well, well, it's, it's, yeah, it's something that is kind of an automatic thing in the, within the business, shall we say, that the, the plant material is guaranteed.
Okay.
And guaranteed for replacement too, okay?
Then just, I guess, the simple answer is how long will it take those trees before they, I no longer have a concrete bunker in front of my face?
I'm going to risk, I'm going to risk my reputation on this one bit.
Two years settling up.
I'd say five years, five years, they're going to fill in, and they're going to be at least another three feet taller.
Okay.
Okay?
Not, not quite tall enough though, 20 something.
No, that's...
Yeah, that, I mean, I don't think that's a realistic goal for anybody. I mean, I think the idea is just that this is going to soften the view and, and sort of help mitigate that damage.
Correct. And I would also like to suggest though, that the mature height of these trees, when they get up there, they will cover, they will cover, they will...
Good.
...get to the height of the building.
Good. Now, I, my neighbors have them, they're great, but when they're maintained.
Yeah, right.
And they do take time. I mean, that's definitely true, it's just...
I'm glad I mentioned that, something about the guarantee.
Yeah.
When before, so can we make that a condition, that we need to, that the applicant needs to ensure the safe, like, that the, all plants are established and they'll replace them if they die and...
Right, maintain the plant.
I was going to ask what, if they are technically guaranteed or warranted or something, whether, whether three years...
I thought I specifically heard him say that they weren't being maintained.
Or perpetuity. I think there's a question about how long would the applicant be responsible, so certainly within the first three years if a tree dies.
During the establishment period.
And we've done that in other...
We have.
All right. And then I did want to just broach the idea that, in this case, one of the checks and balances that we have in place is obviously they're going to get a building permit, and then before they're able to occupy and utilize the new building, there needs to be a certificate of occupancy. And so I don't know, I certainly wasn't here during the last iteration, but I think that this landscape plan, as it's proposed, is much more enforceable than the previous version, where the building inspector will be, you know, charged with going out and inspecting to make sure that this, this planting plan has been established before they get the permission to utilize the building. So that is a safeguard that, I don't know if that was in place the last time, but in this, in this permit, it will, it will be there. So I think the question going forward is how long of a period of time should the applicant be, you know, needing to replace a dead arborvitae or a dead tree that doesn't make it through planting? So that's something that we can chalk up for a discussion, but I just wanted to raise that.
I have a couple of other questions here. The, has there been any discussion about how construction will ensue, for how long to have all that construction, again, right next to my house? Noise is still an issue, but now to have construction. So has that been worked out?
Yeah, why don't, if you can do all your questions at once, then we can let them come up and answer them.
Great. And my last question is, all of the green space and covering up things is one thing, but we still have issues of pollutants in the air. I still have a noise issue. The noise issue is tested from my neighbor, not from me, or the person right across from where the majority of the noise comes from. And this is great that you're expanding, it's great you're addressing some of the issues of it being an eyesore, but basic safety issues. I have a video up on YouTube of you guys dusting as you're cleaning out the chimney, and all that flake going everywhere. The smell of packaging when you're inside your house, and it's overwhelming. Those issues aren't going to be fixed. Those issues aren't gonna be fixed with some nice tree plantings. So it'd be nice to have those questions answered too.
Okay, thank you.
Ken, my name is Gary Dayharsh with One Development and Construction. I can speak to the construction schedule. Our plan would be to apply for permits and start construction as soon as possible. It's approximately an eight-month construction schedule. Depending on the severity of winter, that could extend another month or two. It's certainly ten months or less from start to finish. That would include any restoration and plantings.
I just wanted to address one of his comments relative to the plantings and so forth. You have to remember that, that from the property lines, there is the rail trail. And then from that point, it's Lovefield Street. So that distance is approximately from the property line of one development to the other side of Lovefield Street, about a hundred feet. So when he, so I think, you know, thirty feet, his house is thirty feet away, that's not really a true statement. Because the rail trail, the right of way in the street width is approximately a hundred feet. Additionally, we show on the plan that went out, located by survey, from the, roughly the intersection of Clap Street running northerly, there's a whole existing hedge row of trees and other vegetation between Lovefield Street and the rail trail. So you can see, this is Lovefield Street. This is the additional tree row and hedge and other plantings. The rail trail, our property, and the proposed building addition. So you got like three buffers fitted in that area for that. And which, that's why we wanted to make sure that we showed that. Down in this area, one of the butters in the area has mowed the grass. He maintains it like he would his own front yard. So that in this area, the vegetation is very limited, sparse, it's mostly grass.
Were you aware of the landscaping guarantee that Bill spoke to?
No, we were not involved with that initial phase when that was built, so no.
If I can.
Yeah, come on up again, Bill.
Your exercise, Bill. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Even though Mark doesn't, isn't completely aware of it, I, I wanna kind of say to the plainboard, this is an industry standard, okay? Contractors, landscape contractors are typically hired to install landscaping. And it's usually, when I'm involved in a project like that, like this, we require warranties on all their new plantings. And this, I mean, this could be something that you could add to the, to the order conditions, which is fine. But it's an industry standard and, you know, all the landscape contractors abide by it or are required to comply with it in their pricing structure and everything else. They typically, they buy plants wholesale, you know, from, from their nursery and then they sell it to the client retail. And within that, within that retail and the wholesale value, there's money that they, that they use to, for plant replacements and for the warranty. It's an industry standard, so that's, that's required and that's what we would cut, we would do on a project in here. I think the contractor would require it especially.
Other comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Mike Perouse, I live on Fort Clap Street. So for us, our main concern, Taco and my wife and daughter, is still the air quality. It has gotten better. We know that they changed the smokestack and removed some of the dust that's been out of there. So we don't know all the specifics, but we can say that it has improved this year. We did have, you know, occasional odors coming in the backyard. They're not pleasant to deal with. We did have one incident in January where my wife and daughter tried to walk to the bus stop, which is located right here, across from Clap Street. Where they couldn't stand there. They had to leave. My wife had, they had to walk away and my wife drove my daughter too. That is my biggest concern, is my daughter and again, her health. I mentioned this last year. And so, as you're reviewing this and as adhesive applications is considering how they're gonna be working their building, we really would appreciate if you could work your process so we don't get any outcasting.
There was a letter in here, didn't there?
Yeah.
Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, so I was just gonna say, I can't remember who was at the last meeting and who wasn't. We did a lot.
I didn't get.
Yeah, so there was a lot of conversation last meeting about, first of all, the noise. The health agent had, had reviewed that and there was, it was found that there wasn't excessive noise based on the state standards. We heard from Ty and Bond extensively about not only their prior emissions control, but the, the improvements they made. Yeah, here's the number, they destroyed at least ninety-nine point three percent of volatile organic compounds. And so I had asked about that, about what that point seven percent means. And those are all regulated by the DEP and the EPA and are all within healthy levels that don't pose a health risk. And so, I mean, they, the EPA and the DEP definitely have, you know, bigger sticks that they can wield when they're looking at that. And I think that that's, you know, at some point, we defer to them on that regulation. Although I do think, we talked about some conditions as far as after granting a permit, reviewing either if they change their emissions standard or if, or doing a subsequent noise test after it's done, you know, to make sure that those things are still being done. But we did hear a lot of testimony last meeting about that. And I personally, I, I, Ty, I'm blanking on your name, sir. Dave Horowitz acknowledged at the last meeting that, you know, odor is the, is the hard part because it's harder to quantify. But they're, when they're looking at sort of what the emissions contain, that that meets the safety standards. And so, so I, I mean, I've, I've heard, for years, we've heard testimony about people with odor and I fully believe all of you that that is a feature of that neighborhood that comes and goes. And that's something that's sort of an unregulable kind of state, which is hard.
And I understand that and I understand that they've made improvements. The point is just to keep it up there, to say that there's people there. Do get these events, it's really at times really unbearable.
And please don't stop making improvements.
So basically that's it.
And it says it captures a hundred percent of VOCs and HAPs. The only thing I could think of that we could possibly do is like ask them to add a flavor to it or something to it.
Right, well.
What else can you think of, right?
It does bring up, and this was brought up last year and I don't know if there's been any effort to look into it and it's basically, will the new building change anything to the characteristics of the smokestack and how the exhaust comes out? Will it, you know, how will that change it? Is that a concern to the neighborhood?
We talked a little bit about that last time, but we can certainly have Dave come up again and share if he doesn't mind.
Good evening, Dave Horowitz from Ty and Bond, welcome, welcome back. Regarding the new building, I think we talked about it on, on three separate levels. We talked a little bit last time about noise considerations and actually the new building helping us. We talked about emissions from the thermal oxidizers. Those will not change, they're staying where they are. Any change would require plan approval from the DEP. So there's a very big incentive to meet those regulations because if we don't, as you pointed out, somebody's got a big stick. And then the third one is, if there were to be any changes, those plan approval applications, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, they've gotta be done ninety days in advance of any change minimally, correct? So anything would delay what we're trying to accomplish. Those things are gonna be maintained where they are.
Thank you.
So, and I would just add that, you know, as a professional engineer myself, the fact that, you know, you're committing your license to this letter and it's on your company's letterhead, so you're implicating your company if you were lying or to miss, miss.
More than we have, it's good.
Yeah, I mean, it's honestly, I mean, that, that for me is a, is, you know, tells me that, you know, you're not trying to fudge anything here, this is actual, real data. So I appreciate that.
Jeff?
Right, so one thing that, you know, this, this discussion happened extensively at the last hearing. So the board does have a document, which would be a draft decision in front of them, which we can review at some point. But there was an attempt to create a condition that would potentially give a local review process. So, so given the information that Mass DEP regulates the air pollution control permit and changes would have to go to DEP, what we're, what we're trying to do with this permit is give the company some flexibility within the building. But if something changes in their operations and it warrants another oxidizer or a change in the smokestack height, something with the exterior of the building, then it would come to the planning board and the planning board would have an opportunity to understand what the change is and say, oh, that's, you know, a new light or something very minor. Or that's, that could be significant and warrants notification of the butters in a public hearing. So that's something that professionally I didn't see in the other permit. There was not that connection to the Mass DEP permit. So that's, that's the one thing that I think we can propose to do is give the authority to Mass DEP to regulate the air, the, the emissions control. And if something is significant enough that requires a change of the exterior of the building, then that would bring it back to the planning board for a local review. And so that's something that can be discussed further, but that was the best mechanism we could figure out.
It's, it's in construction, it's not after you come online. Yeah, so I think this is, would be only significant related to the Mass DEP. So if it triggers a new application for their permit with the Mass DEP, then they'd come back and we'd have that same discussion we always do, where is this material or not? And then the only other thing that we talked about and is in this draft is the concept of a hundred and twenty days after they, the certificate of occupancy, that there would be a subsequent noise test performed again with the results reported. So that would sort of, you know, once everything's up and running, we can make sure that things are happening on the ground the way that we all expect that they would, once it's up and running.
Would that include beyond noise, any change? Again, with a new building, I'm sure there's a lot of variation there where we could just, you know, check the odor and see if there's anything like that that's gonna impact the neighborhood as well. I mean, I'm, for, from, you know, I know other neighbors have a significant noise issue. For us, it's just, you know, the prevailing wind and having that come down during times of emergency coming from school and stuff like that, it's an issue and it's a real issue. So I know, I'm not trying to put a stop.
No, I mean, I'll, I'll let Dave answer that, but I think from our prior conversation, the problem is how do you quantify the odor and how do you, and how do you address that when it meets all the other safety standards too? So I think that, I don't know if there is a way, Dave, to do something like that, but.
We keep using the same word and I apologize for being redundant, but it's fickle.
Right.
And without some kind of cause and effect, it's very difficult to pinpoint where something comes from and how it manifests itself. I, we can't point out, pardon me, we can't point out though that existing plan approval requires that we capture, to your point, one hundred percent of volatile organic compounds and hazardous air pollutants. And those things are directed to pollution control devices.
Right. Okay.
That aspect.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
And I will just state that also there is a letter from, about the environmental noise monitoring that it reiterates what the, what the Board of Health determined about the noise levels that were acceptable as well. So that's.
Before I give you a, oh, I'm sorry, you're not done?
Done.
All right, proceed.
So just a comment of gratitude, because they changed the process, the noise and the odors over the weekends have pretty much diminished and it's just wonderful. So thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Good to hear.
Noise concerns, the one thing I was wondering is the trucks backing up? And so for us, if I understand it correctly, so we're here, trucks will probably come in here. This is the loading dock, right? So we're getting all the beepin', probably, right? The trucks backing up will be having their backup signals and stuff.
Yeah, we had a discussion last meeting, I can't, I don't have my notes, but I think that the typical delivery sched, that's right. Wanna come up and just reiterate what that was?
So I did read some of the deliveries aspect to it. Didn't sound terribly bad.
I think it's largely business hours.
Steve, happen with adhesive applications. Typical delivery hours and pickup hours would be between nine AM and six PM. Again, that, there might not be the oddball on occasion because we do have some customers that pick up, so there might be the unusual seven-thirty or eight o'clock. But by far, the majority will be between nine AM and six PM.
Thanks, Steve.
So the, the other thing I just wanted to point out is the, the two-hundred-and-forty feet of the eight-foot-high fence.
Yeah.
So that is starting at the corner of the loading dock area here and runs down in this fashion. So when trucks come in, whether it's in the evening or in winter time, headlights on, they'll hit the eight-foot-high wall and that wall will definitely help to buffer some of that backup. Typical eighteen-wheelers or trucks don't have backup beepers on them.
Oh, okay.
You know, they don't, they're not, you know. It's a smaller.
It's the smaller ones, right.
It's a smaller utility trucks, UPS and some other smaller trucks.
Next question is gonna be about the tree line, but they kind of solved that. Thank you very much again for making those changes. I think that's gonna work out pretty well, to be honest with you. Did have a slight concern with the lights and I was wondering, the lights that you chose, are they basically low light pollution lights?
Yeah, so they're all downward facing and they, not only don't they go off the property at all, they really only shine, there's, I think there's one on that back wall that's by the emergency exit.
Okay.
And that's a small pack light, correct me if I'm wrong, but downward facing. And then I think even parts of the parking lot aren't even lit all the time. It's really focused on the areas that are just on site. So there really shouldn't be light pollution based on the plan we've seen.
Okay, that's good. Based on the construction schedule, based on my daughter's location on the bus stop, should I consider talking to the school and having it changed? I was thinking of the dirt, the dust, the patient, that sort. Would you expect to see trucks coming down Lovefield at all? Do you think it's all gonna be basically O'Neill?
Gary Dayharsh with One Development and Construction. All of the construction traffic will be O'Neill, okay? And the heavy herb ore, which might create dust vibration, really happens within the first sixty days of the project. And once we can get the loading closed, I'll take sure.
Very good. Pretty much covers it. Appreciate it very much, adhesive applications. Listen to our neighbors, they need some changes. You guys, how are you doing?
Thank you. Before I give you a second shot, is there anybody else that has any comments or questions? All right, come on down.
David Widen, Fallon Forest, Samuel Street. And David, this, this is largely directed towards some of what you were saying in terms of the fickleness of, of the smell. And so I, I actually have a problem solving thought here, which is that I actually was, this past Thursday, was working on my house and started smelling. So first thing I did was I ran around over to my neighbor Mike's house. They were away at the time to see, I, I didn't know that they were away, to see if they were smelling it, but they weren't around, so I just started walking all around the neighborhood. And so this is part of the fickleness, is that depending on how the wind is, it can, it can sometimes be very narrowly focused and other times it's more pervasive over any number of houses. So I then called here, but the, the, the health inspector was out and the person who was covering was also not available. So I left a message, which probably they just, if anything, heard today, so it probably, I don't know if it came your way. But what, what occurred to me, I was tempted, I was in the middle of painting and I had all my stuff out, but I was tempted to just run over to the, the factory at that time to say. but I was tempted to just run over to the, the factory at that time, to say, what's going on right now? Because whatever's going on right now, this is when that smell is, is emanating. Whatever process is happening right now seems to be producing. It, it, it went on for three hours, because I was working on my house, and it wasn't until after 5:00, it started around 2:00. So, so what occurs to me is, you know, I mean, that would be the crude way of me just running in there, but, but I mean, reporting, okay, from this particular time, the smell was emanating. Because the question I have is, in terms of monitoring what's coming out, if you go there now, if you go there at any given time, as you say, it's fickle, if you go with your, and, and do a measure, it, it's not, it's not capturing what is, what's happening when that smell is, I would say. So if there's something in terms of particular matter that might be different, because it is, most of the time, the smell is not there. But when it's there, it is very, it is very present, and it can, it can range from an hour to multiple hours. There are times, I mean, as I say, just this past Thursday, because you had made a comment that you hadn't, that there hadn't been a complaint in three years, which is really not the case. I mean, at a certain point, I mean, Mike and I are constantly comparing notes. I know that he and his wife were emailing it at certain points. So I mean, the thing is, I also thought, well, we've reported it, it's being addressed, it's being looked into, so I stopped reporting it every time I smelled it. But this was, you know, I took your words to heart, and thought, okay, I'm smelling it, I'm going to report it right now. And I was very tempted, since I didn't get through to anybody, I just got the voicemails, I was tempted in a while to say, what's happening right now, because this, the smell's happening? Is there something different? Is there a certain phase in whatever goes on in, in, in the production process, or if there's some kind of exhaust type of process that's going on at that moment? That would seem to me would be the critical time, and it is fickle, but if, if, if we caught that exact time and, and it was possible from the company's records to know what was going on at that given moment, then it would be easier to sort of fine-tune, you know, well, here's where the problem comes in, because it's not most of the time. So, you know, I say this very much in the spirit of problem solving, not, not to be a thorn in anyone's side, because I want to reiterate that I really feel like you have been very responsive to the, to the different concerns, and there was, there was a lot of discussion that, I'm sorry, your name?
Julian.
Julian, that you missed last time, that it was quite in-depth conversations about the noise and, and, you know, there, there's been a lot of responsiveness, and, and in terms of the visual, and, and, you know, the low-impact lighting, all these things are great, but this is something, you know, I'm just raising it as, as a thought about, this would be the way to really find out what's, how, why is this happening? Like, what process is happening right now that's causing the smell? And when this smell is happening, is there something more concerning that's coming out? Because any other time when you measure it, the smell's not happening, there might be something that's not, I think, I think expressed.
Yep.
Thank you for consideration.
Comment, thoughts?
I have an issue.
Okay, please.
Mike Schaefer, owner of Adhesive Applications. You know, I have an issue with the, you know, all the smells are coming from our place. There's the asphalt plant, there's the sewage plant, and I know the sewage plant sometimes is pretty intense, you know, especially when it's wet, it's something, so it's hard to say it's just us doing, you know, the, the odors. So I, I know, you know, I mean, the asphalt plant operates, and, and also two products are very plastic, does things. So I think it's hard to sort of say, we just cause those odors.
That's fair. Yep.
Just to, just to respond to that very quickly, David again from Stanley Street. When I smelled that, I ran around the neighborhood, I was in their property, then I ran across the bike trail and looked across, and I've seen this before, and I saw this very dramatically in the wintertime, one time when it was profound, and I actually called, the, the fire chief came down. This was earlier on, before I'd ever attended meetings here. I, I don't know if the meetings had fully started yet. It was several years back. But one, one time on a winter night, it went, and it was very obvious because of the, you know, the condensation that was going on, it was coming out of that smokestack. And even on Thursday, it was, it was a hot sunny day, but I could see, you know, the sort of, how would you put it? I mean, there was a sort of gaseous emission that was coming out of the tall stack.
I'm not sure how you can correlate, though, seeing a gas coming out of that stack as, as being the smell. I have difficult, I'm, I'm not saying it isn't, but, but that for me is anecdotal at best. It still could have been some other smell coming around, and there happened to be smoke coming out of that stack.
I mean, I will have to say, I mean, I'm familiar with the smell of the sewage treatment plant, because I've gone by there many times on my bicycle. I can tell you right off the bat, I mean, just as a person, that it, it, it's not a sewage smell. I mean, I know that that's an unpleasant smell, but this is a very specific kind of smell, and it really, it just, it just kind of cuts your breath. And, you know, I've looked at that stack at, at, at other times, I mean, because I live right there, I ride my bike, I've rollerbladed, and, and, you know, that time of winter was when it really was where I felt it was most convincing to me, because it was just like very obviously, the smell was coming out, I, I just, it was.
Yeah, we, we really run into trouble regulating odor, where, I mean, we can require that it meets the emission standards for sort of what's coming out, which is what we've done and what the state does and the federal government, but where the odor doesn't carry with it anything that's not supposed to be produced, it becomes something that we really struggle to regulate. It becomes hard for us to even enforce that even if we wanted to, just because it's not, there's nothing quantifiable about it.
So, so.
I'd like to just, Mr. Schaefer, would you be willing to, if, if neighbors were to call you, would you have like a hotline, or would you accept those calls?
Or an email?
Sure. Yeah, we would. You know, I, I don't think we'd like everybody to come walk in the plant.
Right.
Well, I did.
Safety issues, but yes, we would.
Well, and I think it, the, the concept also assumes that if you identify what the cause is, that it may or may not be something that they're willing or able to fix, right? It may be a regular part of their business that happens, you know, every other week, and there's no other way around it. But I, I, I don't think it hurts to give more information, as long as it's not people knocking on the door or bringing the phone.
We have evidence that they respond to the neighbors, so bringing them information might be the fastest way to solve it.
Right.
It might correlate to some data points, that they, they might say, oh, well, it looks like we have to clean our stack every 23 days instead of every 25 days or something, and it might actually give them data points, never know.
Well, that was, that was the spirit in which I was raising it, and just in terms of, you know, just responding to the notion of, you know, that it is hard to sort of figure out the correlation between the smell and what's there. My thought is, just wondering if, when it's been measured, if the smell wasn't there, there may have not been the full thing going on.
So, I, I mean, we can have Dave come back up and talk about it. My understanding is that the way the DEP regulates those emissions, it's not something where you can wait till the guy leaves and then pump everything out and get rid of it. So, I don't think it works that way, but Dave, maybe you can give a little more nuance to sort of what.
I'm not suggesting that.
No, 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 but I'm, and I'm not saying that, but I, I think it's, it's a little more comprehensive.
So, Dave Forow, it's time bond. A couple of things. First off, the, the visual effect, I think he's referring to, is temperature. These aren't really smokestacks. These are what we call thermal oxidizers. We're breaking down the core components of volatile organic compounds and hazardous air pollutants. We're, we're destroying them. So, using the word smokestack has a visual appeal that really isn't applicable to what we're talking about. When you see something out of those stacks, it's usually the delta between hot and cold, and I wouldn't be surprised if in the wintertime it was more pronounced than it would be in the summertime, because the deltas are there. And another great one, big stick again, both EPA and DEP mandate operational temperatures of those units. Right in their air permits, they have temperature limits that they must meet, hot, not low. And if they go low, they have interlocks that shut the system down. Collecting data is never a bad idea. I do want to point out, though, when I say fickle, I'm saying fickle about what we're smelling, where we're smelling it, and where it comes from.
Right.
And it's going to be interesting, if you want to set up a Google account and collect emails, you might find some correlation. My guess is you won't, but I don't want to taint the jury pool. I mean, it's just, it's data.
Might try it to somewhere else.
How does the, how does the DEP testing of emissions work? I mean, are they coming out for spot tests? Are there devices that are built into those that are constantly testing it? How does it work?
So, three things. The capture efficiency is what's really critical. So you talked earlier about 100% capture. You guys did a great job picking up on all this stuff. What that means is, internal to the building, they're collecting those VOCs and HAPS for destruction of thermal oxidizer. That's item one. Item two is, we have to demonstrate that, and we've got manometers in place which alarm us if that 100% capture is not occurring. So we've got visual and audible alarms. And then last but not least, it's the temperature. We've got to be at least 1,400, my colleague's back there helping with the air permit, about 1,400 degrees. When it goes below, the system shuts down. So we've got, we've got fail safes at every level required by DEP and EPA.
Okay.
I'll throw in one thing too, and there, you know, there's an element of this application which, something like odor is outside of most of the city's capabilities, and the health agent doesn't have the expertise or the equipment to test this. And we had the discussion at the first application in a little bit in the first hearing, which is, the planning board does not have the complete authority to just go back and start manipulating all of the proposed, all of the operations. What the planning board has is a limited amount of jurisdiction to apply some standards to what their, what the addition is doing. And so we've heard the testimony that the addition is by and large part for storage, and they're going to operate within, you know, their procedures, so there's some documentation that we're trying to at least capture sort of the general project narrative and the company narrative, which describes the current operations as-is. The planning board has some jurisdiction over future expansions from here on out that might, that, that's the relationship to these exterior changes. If they increase operations such that another thermal oxidizer is necessary, then that would be something that would give the planning board more authority to, to regulate odor. Because that's considered like one place where the odor might be emanating from, but as of this proposal, the, the planning board has limited things that they can control, and going back to things that are already built or functioning, there's very limited reach back in this case. So what, what the conditions that we've kind of set out to establish are things that could establish the current set of operations, and then potentially have review options on, on future expansion. So, it's tricky, it's, it's hard to resolve every problem. You know, the screening of the building is there, the screening of headlights is there, the drainage from the paved areas is there. You know, that's, that's the things that are correctly in front of the planning board. And noise and odor are the ones that have existed, and the planning board's asked for certain information, and the company's made certain improvements to address the current operations, but the planning board has some control of future, not much going back. So, I just wanted to just kind of put that out there a little bit.
Here, you got a question?
Yeah, Mr. Pepin, you got something to say about this?
About what?
About what's going on with all the smell and everything else. You work there, right? You've been here for a long time. You see what goes on every single day. Why don't you give us your description of what, what you think?
We'll see. Steve Pepin. Mr. Schuman, to answer your question as best I can, yes, I do work there, have for an awfully long time. The oxidizers, as Mr. Horowitz's commented, are capturing all of the VOCs and HAPS. They're being cooked off at a temperatures regulated by the DEP. We have executed efficiency that exceeds the minimum standards, and as for any odors that may be coming out of it, everything stack height has been dictated by the DEP. I heard somebody talk about, you know, air movement, air streams, if something's moving something around up in the atmosphere, bringing it down to the ground. I, I have no control over that, but I can tell you that it may not be an occurrence, but I have no control over, we have no control over that. The stack height was dictated, David, if I'm not mistaken, by the DEP. So, that's the only comment I have to make to it.
Thank you.
Okay?
Any other comments or questions at this point? Planning board comments?
Are you going to read some in? Do you want to come up with our conditions?
Well, I want to go through the factors first, and then we can talk about some of the draft conditions we have and some of the, unless, Jeff, do you?
I'll do that.
Oh, one more, all right.
Julian Parker Burns, 116 Love Field Street. So, it is nice to see what's being done. I think it's really interesting how, when offered a really good way to resolve an issue, you said, well, it's not us. Maybe it's not us, I don't have control over, but we want to work, we are not your abutters, we're your neighbors. And the reason I said I live 20 feet away from you is because I walk every single day, two or three times a day, right next to that wall. That's why I'm 20 feet away from you. It's maybe now 8 feet. But we live there, and you guys make your money there. Really, really poisonous, dangerous stuff you work with, and we, with our families, are really concerned how that's taken care of. So instead of trying to say, well, maybe it's a sewage treatment plant, say, yeah, that's a great idea. All you need is a phone number, and you can start to connect the dots, and like somebody said, maybe it's somebody else making that smell. But that smell is so distinct to what you guys make, that we know it right away, like this one. So, yeah, we live there, and we want this to work, like you want it to work. Don't avoid it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so let's go through factors under the bylaw for the special permit. So first is conformance with provisions of the ordinances of the City of East Hampton, the general laws of Massachusetts, and all applicable rules and regulations of state and federal agencies. We've got more of that here than we typically do, especially with the DEP involvement, and I think they've showed compliance with all of that. Protection of city amenities and abutting properties through the minimizing of any detrimental or offensive uses or destruction of unique and important natural, scenic, or historic features on the site. So we've talked about the tree removal. I think the application, the, the modified MIDE application has sort of done a good job addressing the, the tree removal and preserving as much as they can. That we've talked about the noise issues and the emissions issues, and verified that they're at the acceptable levels. I do think we probably want to address the noise stuff through our condition, at least to confirm once it's up and running that that's the case, but I think we've touched on all of that. Minimization of traffic and safety impacts of the proposed development on adjacent highways or roads, and maximizing the convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site. We talked a little bit about deliveries, there's parking on-site, not too many issues with the public attending, so they don't have the same issues with safety, I don't think. Scotty, if anyone up here disagrees or wants to talk about any of this.
There's actually potentially less traffic, because there won't be the truck traffic between the two of them.
Back and forth. Adequacy of methods of disposal of sewage and refuse, and the drainage of surface and subversive surface water, adequate means of protecting wetlands, water sheds, offer first and well areas. There's stormwater management permit and SWPP that's been reviewed both by the board and by the city engineer. And again, the, the extent that the refuse includes emissions, we've heard plenty of testimony about sort of the effectiveness of that process. Mitigation of adverse impacts on the city's resources, including the effect on the city's water supply and distribution system. I don't think that there's been any change in the use on that level, so I don't think that'll be an issue. Provisions for the off-street loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to the normal operation of the establishment of parking, lighting, and internal traffic control. So the added parking and reduced truck traffic across the city. We talked about the lighting plan, which I think does a good job of addressing the environment and not engaging in light pollution. There has, there is a request for a waiver, right, Jeff, for the parking spaces?
Yes.
For the parking space, right?
Do we need to give like express approval for each of the waivers, or can we bundle them?
Yeah. Well, we have to have explicit make-finding for, at least for the parking waiver, right?
Yeah, I think the number, I think the waiver from the required number to what's proposed, I think.
157 to 72?
72, yep. I think the applicant, I mean, the applicant has previously provided that 72 is sufficient, even in the event that all the employees were present at one time, which is not the case typically, plus they're not open to the public, so it's not.
Right, so we talked about that at the last hearing, is that it's not really a public concern about the adequacy of parking, and frankly, if they find that they need more parking spaces, they have an incentive to address that, because it's for their employees.
And it prevents too many permeable.
Right, it limits that, right. Applicants' efforts to integrate the development into the existing landscape through design features such as vegetated buffers and retention of open space, and minimization of the area where existing vegetation is to be removed. When tree removal is required, special attention is to be given to the planting of replacement trees. I think they've come back with a really good plan for that, of sort of addressing the concerns for removing the trees that need to be removed and replacing them with.
And I think we should add a condition about the warranty of the, of the trees.
Yeah, agreed. We can talk about what. We can talk about what that year period should be, how long we want to require that for, but I think that's another good condition to have. Consistency of the development with respect to setback area placement of parking, architectural and landscape of the surrounding buildings and developments. There's, they're gonna plant the arborvitae, they've addressed sort of the issue with the bike path and protecting that area. Adequacy of the measures to prevent pollution of surface or groundwater and to minimize erosion and sedimentation, and to minimize changes in groundwater levels. Again, we talked about the stormwater plan. And I think that's, addresses that. And then finally, adequacy of the methods to ensure that the use will not constitute a nuisance by a reasonably unacceptable level of air or water pollution, excessive noise or visually flagrant structures and accessories, which has obviously been a big issue here with the air permit and the noise. And I think that we'll have to, I do think doing a condition where if they have to either change their DEP permit, that they'll come back here and we'll determine if that's material or not. And I think also, post certificate of occupancy, once they're up and running for, I would propose a hundred days, or a hundred and twenty days, that they do a new noise study and we confirm that when it's up and running that that hasn't violated the state standards for that.
That's reasonable.
And then, and then the finding that the stormwater management plan is consistent with the bylaws.
Which it is.
So then the conditions that we talked about last time and are in the draft version that Jeff had worked on, one states, "All aspects of the use shall be operated in accordance with the general project narrative and company narrative dated July sixteenth, twenty nineteen. Any substantial changes to the exterior of the building that require plan approval and/or other review and approval under the facilities existing mass DEP air control, air pollution control permit shall be presented to the planning board at a public meeting for board determination if the changes are significant enough to require modification of the special permit." So that's what we were talking about. I would recommend that, I think that makes sense.
Absolutely.
Two is, "All exterior site improvements shall be constructed and maintained in accordance with the approved plans and shall be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. In the event that any exterior changes cannot be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, an alternative schedule shall be reviewed and approved by the board at a public meeting prior to the issuance of a temporary certificate of occupancy." So I think the idea there is in case the planning, the planting plan can't be completed at that point, that they could come back and propose, you know, if we've done ninety percent of this, we want a temporary permit.
And that's generally if it's done in like December, and they can't plant it.
Right, exactly.
In this case, I mean, they still, we can still keep it in there, but that's where maybe you, that the, you know, that the planting has to be maintained for a period of three years.
Right, so let's, I mean, let's talk about that, how long?
Can we bring Bill up and get a recommendation?
Sure. Bill? We should have given you a lapel mic at the beginning of this.
So right now, it would be, to start, any plantings that die within three years shall be replaced. Can we, can we make three years of installation?
Part of what's happening is that the construction crew is gonna hire a landscaper and say, we require that you guarantee your stuff, which you're saying they're gonna do anyway, because it makes sense.
Yeah.
What's the standard?
Well, okay, the industry standard is through, for a year or through a growing season. And anything, and, and, you know, subject to a review upon, and that period ending, the plant material shall be reviewed for its healthiness.
One year?
Yes, one year, or through a growing season. That's a typical industry standard. But, I mean, if something after that dies, I think it's, it's, it's part of the plan that if there are fifty arborvitae there, that, you know, and I've seen this a lot in walls where all of a sudden you start to see over a period of ten years, the trees dying off. They die off and they die off, and nobody replaces them.
Yeah.
Well, in this particular case, they should be approved as part of the plan, sort of in perpetuity.
That's kind of what I consider this, is that this is an essential condition, and so if your arborvitae die in five years, you put the arborvitae back up.
Yeah, and that's a good point, because everybody's so fickle.
As, 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 what is, what, as approved, as the plan has been approved here.
Do you think that if the construction gentleman here, forgive me, I forgive you, Gary, were to go to, I just wanted to state this, if you, give me one second, if you were to go out and request that someone do this, and we were to extend that one year to five years, would that increase your costs? Is, is that something that's a reasonable, and Bill, I'm kind of asking this to you, do you think that would not?
We want to buy plants that we believe will survive, we want to install them, that they'll survive. We can put in our agreement with Mr. Schaefer that we'll warranty the plants for three years. We can also put it in our contract with the subcontractor planter that it'll.
So you're gonna warranty it?
Right. Well, I think a condition that, that they will replace any trees that die periodically.
Right, well, I was gonna say, I think we're talking about during planting, you know, the responsibility of the contractor to put them in is one thing, the responsibility of the applicant to have some of these materials in for screening purposes, you know, could, most of these are in perpetuity, as long as there's someone out there who's willing to.
Right. So I mean, I don't know why it would change in five years, if some of these die, it's still something that we deem to be necessary for this expansion. I think it's the same way we would for any other condition or.
So what usually happens is that when the landscaper gives the contractor a price to do, it's, it's for the one, one-year period of replacement or through a growing season. There, there's a cap on his cost to the contractor that they want to kind of maintain. You know, if the contractor, you know, is, is going, is gonna be guaranteeing these for five years, so the cost is greatly increased. Because he, he doesn't know what's, what's gonna happen, so he's just throwing numbers in the air about, you know, repla, plant replacements five years, five years from now. But once the warranty, once he replaces plants that are warranted, there still is a little bit of a warranty period after that. But typically, that's when the landscape contractor's obligation ends, and the owners begin.
Part of the operation maintenance cost.
Is it possible to say something here?
Yes, do it, Harry.
I think so.
Let me try. If a tree dies in five years, okay, could you replace that tree with a tree that's already the same size as the ones that are, that have grown up, or would you replace it with a small one and have it grow back up again? Could you, is it possible to replace that tree that died with the same size as the ones that's there?
Well, I, I, you, you get into a bit of a dicey situation with trying to replace it with the like same. And there, most likely, it is not gonna exist. So I think the obligation there, I think the reasonable obligation is at least to replant it with what was approved in the original plan. Yeah, unfortunately, you know, if it dies five years, now it's grown a half an inch in diameter and caliper, we, we lose that part of it.
Well, it's just the height, that's all, I mean, you know, I mean, if it grows up.
We've also heard, especially with the, some of the other screening we've had, that the full-grown trees don't transplant as well.
Yeah. Yeah. It gets very, it gets astronomical, it gets, there's logistics involved in it, availability, there's all kinds of things that get thrown into trying to, trying to replace something like same like that, on that kind of a scale.
All right, thanks, Bill. I mean, I tend to think that the vegetative buffer is no different than, say, the structure they built around the oxidizer, if that rots and falls apart, you put up a new one.
You replace it, it's just part of the operation.
It's not decorative, right. I think that makes sense.
I'm swayed by that. I have some hesitation, because I do think it's placing, and I try to watch out for this, this is a balance in protecting the needs of the community and city, and also not placing a burden on businesses. We place a lot of burden on businesses, and this business has been very responsive. And, and this is increasing costs after they've already agreed to put something in that was not essential to the project. But I'm swayed by the fact that it is something that they've agreed to do, it's important for the bike path in the area, and that it's important to maintain.
And then based on the overall maintenance, O and M costs, and this building of plowing and all the maintenance, a tree a year, an average, or two trees a year is not a huge cost.
So something like, "All plantings installed pursuant to the approved landscape plan that may die shall be replaced with a similar species and size as originally required?"
Yep.
Something along that.
That sounds good.
Pretty clear, right?
That sounds great.
Next condition is, "The property shall maintain an erosion and sediment control plan, stormwater pollution plan substantially as outlined in the preliminary plan dated July sixteenth, twenty nineteen." And then the last one that's on here is, "A hundred and twenty days after the final certificate of occupancy is issued, the owner shall conduct a noise study to ensure the noise generated by the facility complies with the mass DEP noise policy. The testing shall be performed at two appropriate locations along the facility property boundary. Testing will be performed over the course of a total weekend shutdown to obtain ambient sound levels, and will continue for at least forty-eight hours after the facility resumes operations." And I believe that came from the health agent, is that right?
Yep.
And then it says, "A, in the event that the noise study determines the limit is exceeded, the operator shall appear before the planning board at a public meeting for the board to determine if the changes are significant enough to require modification of the special permit. And B, in the event the noise study determines operating noises below the required levels, any further complaints, any further noise complaints shall be submitted to the Department of Environmental Protection with notice to the City of East Hampton Health Agent," which I think was also requested by the health agent.
Lot of specificity.
Any, any of those conditions pose a problem for the applicant?
No.
Okay.
Did we want to add a, is, sorry, a condition about setting up some sort of contact, that they also get, that the applicant also gets CC'd on any correspondence about noise or odor concerns, so they can track the data points, whatever, like we discussed, or?
I'm happy to make that a condition. I really think the stuff, I mean, I tend to agree with Julian, that I think this is constructive and it may be helpful. I also feel like it's a little bit outside what we can govern, so I, I sort of feel like that's something we should strongly encourage the applicant and their neighbors to do, and find a way to communicate about this in a way that doesn't impact their business operations, but also allows for some data collection to see if there's, A, a problem with the source and not someone else, or B, if there's something easy to do that might help mitigate this problem. But, but I think that's sort of outside of us, and just sort of the many things that I expect you guys will all do together as part of neighbors in a neighborhood.
Yeah, I agree.
That's sort of.
The one thing I didn't find, and I know it was kind of encapsulated in a couple spots, were in their proposal that we received, they spelled out several waivers, it was like a little list of waivers that they have, and don't have it in front of me. And I'm not sure.
Jeff wants to say something.
Yeah, Jeff.
Well, no, I was, when you were talking about having contact between neighbors or people with the, their business.
Yep.
Is it, it was mentioned that they could just have a special number they can call, and they can call any complaint they might have in there?
But you said email.
I, I think email is the easiest way, but I really think that's something that we should leave to.
I know that, but a lot of people may not, still may not have email.
Yep.
And they still back up with a phone call.
I, I think that's something that we should be leaving to the applicant and the neighbors to figure out a way to communicate that way. I think that everyone's, everyone's adult and can probably figure out the best way to do that, but I'm looking for the waiver. Okay, here we go. First one is the fence exceeding six feet in height, going to eight feet tall.
Right.
Which I think we generally agree is good. I would approve that waiver. Second one is the fence being set back a distance equal to the height, so this would be only located one foot off the rear property line. And the reason given in the application is for better access to maintenance, for maintenance to the stormwater management system.
And, and to interrupt you, so that request really has been modified slightly.
Yeah.
Because the fence is going to be here, but we are requesting that this first section be put within one foot of the boundary line.
Right, to go around those existing trees and the, yeah.
Yeah, because of the grading.
Okay, I think that makes sense. And, and what about the one with the driveway? Has the driveway plan changed at all?
No, so the, correct, the driveway width is still the same.
Okay.
That has not changed.
Okay, and so.
So that's another request.
That's, it's, parking spaces would be at least nine feet wide, waiver to allow the driveway access to be thirty feet wide, and the parking space to be nine feet wide by eighteen feet in length, and an additional thirty-foot wide driveway entrance. I think the parking plan and the driveway plan makes sense. The, the next one is the waiver of the requirement of a traffic impact statement. I think we've talked a lot about how this doesn't generate traffic the way a commercial business does, and in fact, I think it's probably reducing traffic because those trucks are not going back and forth.
Especially considering what might be happening at one ferry soon, it would be less in that area, so it's good.
Right. And then there's a waiver requested for a financial impact statement, and notes that cost information for the project is addressed within the company narrative document. We rarely require financial impact statements anyways, even when we're supposed to. And a waiver is requested to reduce the required amount of parking from the one fifty-nine to now seventy-two, which we've addressed. So I think that's all waivers that are requested.
Correct.
Ready for me?
Please, Jim.
I motion to approve the special permit for the October company at forty-one O'Neill Street with the aforementioned conditions and approvals of waivers.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Okay. Thank you all very much. I really do, I like the level of cooperation there's been, and I hope that that continues going forward, so thank you all.
Yes, thank you so much for that.
Cooperation. Okay. Chad, are you leaving?
I have to get home with my wife.
And Chris is leaving, right. All right.
Chris is leaving, too?
Yep.
Part of the engineering.
All right, folks, we have another, folks, we got another item on our agenda, so if you can take the conversations outside, that would be excellent. Thank you. So next up, continued public hearing for Beacon Solar LLC seeking a special permit at or about Fifty Florence Road. All right, you, staying here. Chris, thank you. Chad, you sticking around or are you leaving?
Well, I have to wait for my wife to pick me up.
Okay.
Sorry, that was me.
All right.
You want to give me a ride?
Well, that cleared the room out. All right, so we've got some supplemental submissions and extra information, and where are we based on? You want to walk through the, I think you have a letter that addresses the issues that were raised at the last meeting?
Yep. Ethan Winter, Cypress Creek Renewables, with Brad Saunders from GEI. Just wanted to, before we dive in, Chairman, just reflect on the process we've gone through together the last few months. Just as we just heard on October project, this is an important project for the city on a piece of property that is of great interest, sort of to the planning department and others. And we've been eager to hear input from the neighbors, from stakeholder groups, my job to do that. And I think this has been a good process for our company with a mass smart project, really incorporating that input. The product that we have now is frankly better than what we started with, and it's because of the input from this board, the conservation commission, people in the room here. And I think it's pretty close to, if not perfect, you know, a very good project. So just wanted to offer that preamble. We've got a fair amount to cover tonight, so Brad's gonna give us a tour of the site plan revisions, and then we'll dive into the letter.
Sure.
There's some overlap there.
Great.
Can I ask you to turn on the mic?
The mic doesn't amplify, it just records.
Can you?
You want to move up?
Tap it.
You might want to.
Tap the mic. Yeah, see, it's not, it's just an L.
Okay, my name's Brad Saunders, I'm with GEI Consultants. And back in July was the last time we met with this board. Since that time, we have met with the Conservation Commission twice, and have received approval from them, although we're waiting for the order of conditions. They did vote to approve the project last week. There were a number of questions that this board asked that we put on revised plans to clarify things, and I'll run through those quickly. The first issue was the result of visibility of a butters on Maxine Circle. I'm trying to show it to you guys as well, but I'm up here. I don't know. I want everyone to see it. We've added to the screening, the vegetation screening.
I'll try.
There you go. There you go. Down along through there. We've added six sweeping willows and two groupings of three, which were strategically located to fill in gaps in the view from the Maxine Circle neighborhood. We also moved the junipers and arborvitae back towards the solar array of. We also moved the junipers and arborvitae back towards the solar array bed to make room for those overgrown masses. One of the questions that was raised at the last meeting was the issue of possible noise from the operation of the facility again on Maxine Circle. We answered that at the meeting, but the, the board also was interested in knowing if there was some sort of a screen that might be able to be put in there to beef up the vegetation screen. So we have proposed a perforated fence, which is more of a solid fence than the chain link security fence, which will provide both additional screening from a visual standpoint, because it'll be dark green in color, and it will also provide some buffering for noise impacts. Another issue on screening, if you could, Jeff, go up to the left. Right there, where we have the laydown area. The concern was some, some screening be provided during construction for the Lathrop community, which is just to the north here. So we have proposed to put in a mesh screen right along the north edge of the access road, which will screen that from the Lathrop apartment. We were asked to provide detailed site plans for each of the equipment pads. As you recall, we have two equipment pads at this project. One is right in there and the other one is down. So, the detail for those is provided in the package. It's also on the plans themselves, but if you look at details, C fifty-five on drawing C five oh three, there's a detail of the equipment pad. That is essentially the same pad in both locations. There is some language in there that allows for some movement of the actual equipment within that location, but that's, that's the big idea.
Brad, just to highlight what you just said. So those pads, the size doesn't change. That includes battery system, inverters, transformers, all of that is on that pad. The actual configuration may change.
Maybe laid out differently.
Equipment may, the squares may be a little bit different, but the pad is the pad.
Okay.
And it's, both of them are deep in the interior, far from any residue.
Right.
Okay.
The, the next one was related to the landscaping plan along Maxine Circle, as I mentioned earlier. We have appropriated willows and made some other changes in that area that described. Oh my god.
And those are gonna go in at eight to ten feet, is that right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, we were requested to specify on the plan exactly, numbers and sizes. They will all go in at the eight to ten.
C three hundred.
Chairman, based on our research, the willows grow up to two feet a year.
Yeah.
So they'll quickly outpace everything else that's there.
Great.
And typically reach and to about fifty.
And I, I'm gonna just skip ahead for a moment because Ethan will be addressing the issues of property values and electromagnetic fields.
Yep.
But I wanted to talk about a couple of other planning visions. Came about through discussions with the Conservation Commission, really. The first was that first culvert crossing.
Yep.
Yeah, at, at the time, back in July, we were still studying that.
Yeah.
We found that it's, it's a somewhat odd culvert. It's not a standard construction. And so we're concerned enough regarding its loading capacity that we're proposing to put a leading slab, one foot thick reinforced concrete, twelve feet wide, eight feet long, to essentially span that culvert. So there won't be any loading put on that culvert as a result.
And will that stay there? Is that just for the construction?
No, that's for permanent.
Permanent, okay.
That's for permanent. And-
Give me the dimensions of that again, please.
Benefit of that is we don't touch that culvert.
Yeah.
What are the dimensions?
So we're not changing any of the hydro. Eight by twelve.
Eight by twelve, thank you.
Yes.
Right, so you don't have to replace the existing culvert, you can just make sure there's no load actually placed on it.
Exactly.
That makes sense.
And, and the last thing with the Conservation Commission is we have our security fence. I guess it's probably easiest to just show it on here. We had a security fence going around both arrays.
Yep.
They're in red here. This fence was going to cross over a wetland area. The Conservation Commission requested that we relocate that so that it doesn't cross the wetland. Instead, it goes down along the edge, then goes along the roadway, outside of the wetland. The roadway, yeah, the driveway, and then comes back up the other side. So there's no wetland crossing with the fence.
Great, here.
The other, other thing I want to mention is I think at one point we were saying the fence was, was going to be six inches off the ground.
Yep.
We've increased that to ten inches.
Okay, great. Help the critters.
Yeah, that will allow fairly large areas.
Yeah. All right, Ethan, you got the other two issues to address?
Yeah, just a couple other things. I, I think we mentioned this earlier, but we clipped the project here, the northwest corner, out of the riverfront.
Yep.
Just reminding you that we've done that.
Ethan, can I have you just stand on the other side, just so you're a little closer to the microphone? Thanks.
So we did get some comments from folks over the last meeting and one that they addressed specifically and it's in the letter to the board. First relates to property values, some concern we hear on occasion about projects here. Cypress Creek has built over three hundred projects across the country. We're obviously part of a, a growing sector. If there was a blinking red light on property valuation near projects, it would be a discernible trend, something that assessors and realtors would be well aware of, given how much solar has been developed around the country. We've done market studies where Cypress is quite active in North Carolina, Illinois, and, well, we, and New York, land-based. And what these analyses have shown is that with a paired, they call it match pair analysis, where you're looking at properties basically in the same area before and after a project is commissioned, what's the sale trend? And there is no trend, is the bottom line. It may surprise folks that some properties actually sell for more. That may have nothing to do with the solar. But some folks do see this as an amenity or something, particularly younger buyers who see community solar as something they may want to tap into. So it, it may mix the, or change the mix of who the buyers and sellers are of these properties. If you don't like looking at it, you may sell it. You may sell to someone who really doesn't have a, a strong view about it either way. But I'm happy to share some of the research we've done. It's out of market. There really isn't anything that I've seen from Massachusetts yet that's, that shows any kind of trend one way or the other. But we feel very confident with the research that we've commissioned to company that this would not affect property values in a significant way. The other side of that is we've made a very substantial investment in this vegetative culvert. Tens of thousands of dollars and we're stretching quite far to make this one of the more robust vegetative screens you're gonna see in this part of the state. With three different plant, you know, plantings of vegetative screen there, plus the perforated fence screen, plus metallic coating. So we think this is gonna really mitigate the concerns from the Butters that have been raised. Guess I'll stop there if anyone has any questions on the property values.
Oh, just that the state, even though the studies aren't in Massachusetts, the E, DEP or maybe it's Department of Public Utilities, their, their sort of material on solar facilities also acknowledges kind of not a real pattern one way or the other with respect to property values.
And again, the first people to see this would be the assessors.
Right.
And the realtors and the appraisers.
The question I have would be about the easel.
We got one more topic.
We'll get into, I know we're gonna get into that cheeseburger, so.
All right.
On electromagnetic fields, we had a question about that. It's kind of interesting.
Like Chad.
These solar projects do have a small field of EMF. At a hundred and fifty feet, it's about the same as the background earth levels. When you're a couple feet away, it's sort of like your cellphone or the Bluetooth in your ear or a television set. So, and actually there's some pretty good research out of Massachusetts, Clean Energy Center, which we leaned on to clarify that. So it's not an issue. You may ask about the batteries. The battery systems don't emit any EMF. They're, you know, it's a chemical reaction that stores the energy there. There's no electromagnetic spectrum there at all. One thing I'll flag in terms of distance, I noted that on the East Hampton solar project, the board asked for a minimum distance of two hundred and fifty feet from inverters. Will be at least twice that with this project. The closest houses to the fence will be over three hundred feet. And as noted, the inverter pads are gonna be several hundred feet to the interior of the project from there. So you won't hear any of the hum at the inverter and you won't have any exposure to the EMF there.
Okay.
Any questions on that? I'm not a physicist, this is my summary.
So while we're on the screening, there was an email from Corey Plucker, who was at Six Maxine Circle. I think, you guys get that? Has that issue been cleared up with the screening for that property?
Yeah, I wanted to address that because I, I know this is of importance to the Kavalis as well. And again, we are adding these willows specifically to plug a visual sight line on the south side and the north side of that, that southern array. So those willows are designed to take part or take hold in a wet spot. They can handle some drought, but they're ideal in a wet place. We've heard there's, we know there's a wet area there.
Yeah.
And so the plan is to plant those in a way that benefits everyone in that neighborhood. It's understandably a slippery slope if we're offering, or people are asking, or we're offering a tree for you, three trees for you, a privacy screen. I mean, we'd have to offer the same thing to everybody. We did take that request up the chain and I offered to do that. What happened with Corey is he planted a bunch of hemlock along his fence line and those are trees that are habituated to being in the dark forest. So they're not doing very well and he'd love to have some new trees there. And he's got some apple trees there as well, but that line of hemlock are looking pretty sad. We think our strategy here addresses the neighborhood issue as much as we can.
Okay. The willows, tall trees, voluminous in terms of the amount of space they occupy. This is really gonna, those three are gonna block a big area. Is that your design?
The idea is folks don't want to look at this. We're gonna, at least during the time of the year where you have foliage, you're not gonna see a whole lot through those, those two areas there. They have to be spaced far enough apart so that each of those trees can grow, because you're right. They do grow quickly. So if they're too close, they'll constrain each other.
Very attractive.
But we have a landscape artifact design our, our plan here so that it should take pretty well.
I just have a question, if I can, about the fence. So I just wanted to clarify that the proposed perforated fence is, is just, is just confined to the fence section that faces Maxine Circle, right? So it is demarked on the plans as the northernmost, southernmost area?
Yeah, no, we're on, Jeff, it'll run the entire length of that.
Up and down.
So no one has a, you know, a cheater view through there.
Have you ever installed one or did you, did you pick this for a reason? Can you describe the, the nature of this thing? My, my, and my one specific question is just to make sure, because it's just, when you read the detail, I just didn't know if it would have any reflective qualities or whether it would be, just making sure that it's not gonna create something unexpected.
Something else.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, I, I, Brad, coming on, my guess is it's a, it's a matte sort of, you know, absorbent fabric.
And it's also behind the vegetation that's being planted.
Okay, so it'll be green and the fence will be green and it will be behind green plants.
Okay.
The fence, the screening on the north side will be temporary, so just to be clear on that. We're using that as a sound and visual barrier for Lathrop during construction and then that'll come out. So any other questions on the visual buffer screening plan at this point? Okay, I wanted to talk a little bit about, and we have a few cheeseburgers coming up here, so decommissioning.
Yep.
Start with that. Jeff, thank you for sharing an example from the J.D. Calz project. As it turns out, our project is, is very similar to the Chutes Berry project. It's about the same size, about the same acreage. And what they did there is a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, ten-year cash installment for that surety. We would prefer a bond. It lessens the financial burden for us in terms of spreading that capital out, way out over a longer period of time. And we would even consider bumping up to a hundred and fifty percent of the bond over a longer period of time.
Remind me again what the, the estimate is that you had for the decommissioning?
Yeah, it's in the plan, just to clarify. Hold on, just a second. Roughly, it's three hundred and six thousand for the total assembly disposal and site restoration. Assume salvage value is two hundred and twenty-two thousand, so your net is about eighty-three thousand. Multiply that by your hundred and twenty-five percent, you get a hundred and five, hundred and six thousand, which is again very similar to the numbers you saw with the Chutes Berry project that Jeff shared. Again, it would be more manageable for us if we could make that a bond and we would consider making that a bigger surety if that was of interest.
Don't we have a limit of one twenty-five over a number that's picked? So when you say making it bigger, it couldn't go by percent, it would have to be the base number.
Right, so I mean, one of the things that's come up in the past though is there's, there's sort of been a concept that, you know, we're assuming salvage va- value based on today and if we're talking about this in twenty years, when all these things are coming offline, that the salvage value for this stuff may drop just because there's more of it on the market. So I mean, that, that's one of, I mean, I guess, did, did we end up getting the city engineer to look at this or was he?
The city engineer did look at it today. I mean, he reviewed the proposed calculations for the amount.
Yep.
And so as the city attorney says, you know, the sufficiency of the amount is a question for the city engineer or even a, a general contractor. And I think what he said is, he didn't, he thought that the total estimated cost of three hundred and six thousand dollars to remove it was reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
He, he had no issue with the actual amount. And where we've had the interact, this interaction is the city attorney is seeing with all the new solar projects throughout the state, that in twenty years, that that salvage value is really the concern. So it's not the construction amount, it's the value of the salvage.
What the credit is for the salvage.
So the board has used that as the justification to go up to a hundred and twenty-five percent.
And we've done bonds in the past for this, isn't that right? Is there a preference for the city?
Well, I think it's in here, I mean, the city attorney is recommending cash.
Yep.
But what I was doing is looking at the conditions for the other permit.
Yep.
We have not seen the final-
Debate over it.
Yeah.
Over what kind of financing we could take, how it was gonna be managed. Remember that? That was years back with Jessica.
We did ask Jeff for a copy of whatever, I guess it's still being negotiated with the other project, so.
Yeah, I mean, the other condition was discussed and it, it leaves it open as to the nature of-
The nature of the financial surety.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, it's not specific.
Could you elaborate a little bit on what, how you're trading the East Hampton solar project in terms of the terms there or?
You have an-
So the, the requirement, the requirement is that the applicant shall provide the city with a financial surety to cover the cost of decommissioning in the event the LSE or owner fails to perform and the city must remove the project, remediate the site. Amount should be a hundred and twelve thousand pursuant to the section of the zoning ordinance. Said surety amounts will be subject to an increase of two percent per year with annual interest compounding for the life of the project. The surety may be established through payments over time from the LSE to the owner of the project site and shall be fully funded within ten years. Any documents and agreement shall be in the form satisfactory to the city attorney and then be submitted to the planning board at a public meeting prior to issuance of a building permit for this project.
Yeah. And, and where, we've read that, I guess my question is, can you elaborate on the hangup? If, those are the terms and we don't have a surety yet from the other project, is, is that, there's still some delta here in terms of?
Like what's going on with the other project?
Yeah.
It hasn't made it to us. Have, have they submitted something, have they spoken with the city attorney as far as you know?
Uh, I haven't heard anything specific, no. They were-
So, I mean-
As I've heard, I, that project is supposedly ready to go and so they can't do some things until- until they get this done.
Right. So, they, they, I mean, that condition requires them to have the surety in place before they get their building permit. Presumably, they don't have a building permit.
They don't have.
Since we haven't approved the financial surety.
That's right.
I understand why you asked the question because you want to know how to get it right so you don't have the same hangup.
If that's the horse we're riding, we want to know what it looks like.
Right.
And if it's still in play, then.
My recommendation is that we word it similarly.
Well, or is it worth it to actually figure this stuff out and talk to, you know, the city attorney? And I think years ago when we did this, we spoke with maybe the city treasurer or something about the preference.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I'm less inclined to leave it vague. I mean, that just says basically the city attorney will hash it out with the applicant and then they'll come to us like, we might as well figure out what our options are and try to negotiate with the applicant here.
Doesn't that mean we, is there a way that if we did that, we could sort of condition it so that we don't hold them up anymore? Where are you in terms of timeline on this and needing to get this perm?
We would respectfully ask for a conditional approval tonight with whatever copy outs we need on the decommission.
We can, we can use that same vague language and.
Maybe we can tweak it a little.
This is where, exactly where the other project was, was, you know.
Right.
Super sensitive to time, need this yesterday.
Right.
Have no information in front of us. So, I mean, my recommendation would be to request cash.
Yeah.
If you want a conditional approval or, you know, that's what the city attorney is recommending.
The city attorney does recommend that.
Failed last time because there was too much, you know, there's some questions. So, it's leaving it vague for future consideration with the city attorney and the applicant.
Right. I mean, I think in the long run, that's probably quicker anyways, but.
And 125, a hard cap chairman do we know or?
Yeah, the bylaw allows us to go to 125% of a reasonable estimate of what the decommissioning is. So, we can modify.
We can bump that up to go with a bond. We could change the basis.
Change the basis.
Right.
But our estimates, I think, we stand behind.
Yeah.
I mean, in the email, I mean, the city attorney gives the latitude, gives latitude.
Yeah.
I think no one's requiring, saying like, our ordinance is not clear and no one's requiring cash. The bond is, you know, is an acceptable method.
Yeah, I don't see why not. But the only issue that I have with that, because clearly cash puts a burden, but the only issue I have is if there really is a problem and something's being held up and we're just sort of ignoring it, that's.
Well, I think it's incorrect to presume that the bond is the problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's just not.
Something completely out.
I think there's no way to.
I think we would know if the city attorney was looking at.
Line up 15 things that could be the problem.
Yeah.
This is an area of great, admittedly.
Yeah.
We're all trying to protect the project, the community on this. But, you know, decommissioning bond is very standard.
Yep.
It's the cash plan, which is more of a, more of an aggressive position there, but I would understand if that's what you require.
Right. Well, I mean, there's honestly, there's more risk to the city if we don't have it in cash. I mean, no matter what other system you use, if this goes under, we have cash to pay for it. Whereas if we have a bond, we have to deal with a bonding company and.
That's reasonable too.
I mean, that's the, that's the risk that obviously, in a perfect world for the city, we have that cash on hand to deal with this. I guess where, where are we with the easement stuff?
Yes. Now, is that, are you ready for that?
Yeah, let's.
I just want to add, you know, Jim, I think you're on to something here. In terms of the financials for solar in general and this project, the tariffs on solar and steel are affecting the industry. The investment tax credit is stepping down. So, you know, the ability for us to do more plantings or make a contribution to the land trust, all these sort of nice things to do really start to get pitched. And the decommissioning is a major outlay if it's cash and it's in a front mode.
Right. I mean, the flip side of that is the thing that the city is most concerned about, right, is looking around in 10, 20 years and having a solar field that doesn't work and, you know, Beacon Solar LLC anywhere where we can get them, right?
I think solar's going to work. I think it's a matter of getting into mass, smart hue before.
Well, no, I mean, not that it doesn't work, but that it has reached the end of its useful life and is not being replaced or updated and then we've got to deal with that. So, that's, I mean, that's always the tension here is how to make the project work and also.
Do something in the middle? Some cash, bond for the rest. Is that a possibility?
I mean, I think to be creative at this point is going to delay and create more questions. I mean, I think.
I think that's reasonable.
Right.
Good question. Trying.
How long have people been in business?
My people?
Yeah. Because the Beacon, the.
Cypress Creek has been in business about six years.
Six years?
Yep.
And how many projects have you put in across the country?
About 3,000 gigawatts. So, that's more solar than the state Massachusetts did. We had primarily worked in North Carolina.
I mean, how many projects themselves have you put in, like individually?
We've developed or helped develop about 300 projects.
300?
Yes.
I wouldn't say I'm going to go under eight times so.
Well, it's not a matter of going under. It's, I mean, we've heard in all these cases, right, they have a lifespan of 20 to 25 years.
Jesse's right. There's risk involved.
And.
I mean, there just is.
Right. And so, then you're sharing, the city is sharing risk with a private business that's running it. So, I think that's the concern, but.
It's a balancing act.
Again, if it accelerates things, we can live with the cash and the 10-year on the terms that, you know, outlined in the application. We would prefer a bond if that was due.
Yeah.
If we can have at least a conversation with the city attorney, an engineer to, you know, buy some time to have that conversation. Doesn't hold things up, we would welcome that.
I'm of a mind to mirror the language we used last time, sort of leave it open-ended. I'm not really sure we should be dictating payment method.
I think, I'm trying to find the actual requirement. I think we actually are supposed to. So, the perma-granting authority may require the applicant for large-scale solar facilities to provide a form of surety, either through escrow account, bond, or otherwise to cover the cost of removal in the event the city must remove the facility of an amount and form determined to be reasonable by the special perma-granting authority, but in no event to exceed more than 125% of the cost of removal and compliance with the additional requirements set forth herein. Such surety will not be required for municipal or state-owned facilities. The applicant shall submit a fully inclusive estimate of the costs associated with removal prepared by a qualified engineer. This match will include a mechanism for cost of living adjustment. So, I mean, I think we can leave it to be hammered out with the city attorney and then come back. I mean, it all has to come back to us to get approved anyway.
It said, I think the specific thing it said was bond, a surety, or other.
Right.
So, cash would be other. So, there, it's not even specific there.
No. No, I don't think the, I don't think the city attorney's email was intended to say it must be. I mean, he lays out that some, some municipalities require 100% funding. That's cash. Others allow funding over time. They left the door pretty open for discussion. I just can't make a, I can't give you assurance as to what the final methodology will be that you would hammer out with the city attorney and bring back.
I mean, at this point, moving forward is more important.
Yep. I mean, like I said, I mean, the language that we used last time, it all has to come back and get approved by us anyways, right? So.
I think what the planning board did, and I commend them for that, is I think they tried to establish the amount.
Right.
Clearly. I think that's, that's one of the sure things that can happen as a result of the hearing process is the amount.
I agree. And the only thing I heard, and I think it's reasonable, as you're talking about the salvage, maybe needs to bump the base amount a little bit or that portion of the contract a little bit. And it's hard for us because we're not really experts in salvage or predicting the futures of salvage. You know, we could toss out a number like, you know, an extra 10 grand or something like that, just to try and cover, you know, the potential change.
Right.
It's just as likely there will be a huge secondary market for these panels in parts of the world that are decarbonizing and they're not going to be buying brand-new panels.
I don't disagree with that. And we're not very good at predicting futures of salvage of panels, so.
Well, I think every, every week, we got 3D's coming to the end all at once.
Right.
I mean, my advice would be to increase it by 125% based on the questionable salvage value. And that's neither arbitrary nor capricious. It's consistent.
I agree with that.
The past two large-scale solar projects.
I think that's the best solution.
And then the surety mechanism to be determined or discussed with the city attorney.
Correct.
At our earliest meetings.
Yeah. I mean, we'll use that same language, I think, so that we can, and it'll come back to us for a public hearing is what it says.
I love that.
Okay.
Okay. So, does that just leave the easement issue?
Yeah. And I'm going to sort of call this the access discussion. And just, again, to rewind the tape here, I came out of the land conservation field into solar. So, this is my wheelhouse. I helped hundreds of projects in New York with trails, conservation easements, fee acquisitions, state-funded projects. What's been proposed here, I can honestly say, and I've even done projects on, you know, family property, I've never seen a proposal that suggests, you know, sort of public access parking area for consideration of a dollar on what is otherwise still private land. And it's kind of an interesting thing. And I applaud the creativity because this is an important property that connects a lot of resources. Totally get that. The other reality here is the landowners are not inclined to have this property basically turned into a park. I've read carefully Jeff's proposal and it would allow for all forms of passive recreation on a trail easement with a parking area. And then sort of a trail that goes around the panel, comes back together and around to the south end. In my conversations with Lathrop and with a number of the neighbors, there have been questions about how this would actually work. Because there's not interest in having folks coming from those trails into their backyards or into Lathrop. And so, how is this even enforced is an interesting question. The reality is that what we would like to propose is an option to sort of buy time with the family and do something that may actually be a great outcome in the long term. And that's often how conservation works. It's sometimes nonlinear. I spoke with Matt Gall the other day and I said, you know, I'm pretty sure I know how you feel, but just tell me. And he told me. And I said, well, we would like to provide a public benefit to this project. What do you think about an educational access agreement wherein the school, perhaps volunteers from the land trust and/or Lathrop could be interpreters and we could enter the property on a supervised basis to talk about the solar? You could get in the fence, get totally supervised with hard hats, but we could do that. Teach the students about the systems and talk about the land use and the habitat in which it's couched. And that's sort of the midway here. As I look at what Jeff has sent to me about the city's charge, which is to ensure a harmonious relationship between, between proposed developments and its surroundings, I think we're trying to thread a needle here. And the idea that we could provide some limited public access that does have a purpose to educating people, gets people on land that is right now not open to anybody and perhaps warms the bus for another conversation between the city and the landowners over time as maybe trust is built and strengthened here with access. At the end of the day, our project doesn't at all preclude what has been proposed, but they're not there yet. And it's a fairly novel idea, especially with 10-inch gaps underneath the fence. You know, as Deborah and I have talked a long time about the critters back here, there's some competing interests, right? You know, recreation, I want a trail across there or what about the bear or the habitat? And having limited access back here really provides a sanctuary for the animals that dogs and bikers and walkers might not be the same way. So, what we would suggest is, and we can make this as formal as you like, but basically limited access for education, probably one or two field trips a year. That would be on landowner permission and involve different people in the community, but ideally suited to the students who are going to be thinking about climate change, thinking about how solar fits on the land and really making this a demonstration project as much as we can.
So, a couple of things. I think first of all, I mean, it, it's not particularly novel here. I mean, we've done this, we've done it, I believe even with the Gall family on other parcels.
That's right.
But.
But that trail's not near the system, just to be clear. It's sort of in the back four.
Yeah. I mean, I think it remains to be seen what the trail system would be when these pieces are put all together. But my understanding was that Lathrop was on board with this and was even willing to donate some access or something.
Yeah. I think, I think, I think we need to take the Lathrop reference out of the equation because my understanding from, you know, communications with their design consultant that they're coming with conservation restrictions that are going to include a small parking area with access to their trail network with an eye towards connecting to, you know, the Park Hill Orchard area has a clear intent. So, I don't, that sort of is news to me contrary to what I understand they're going to come forward with.
Well, I agree.
So, if we take that out of the equation.
I did speak with Tom on Friday. He was very comfortable with what we were proposing. And I thought he was agreeing that they weren't comfortable with the general public all over the trails there at Lathrop.
Tom, who, Tom is your person at Lathrop?
Tom Wright is the director.
Like I said, I think that not as relevant as some of the other things that were raised.
Right.
But again, this project doesn't preclude that. We could, that could happen on the road here. That would be a condition.
The difficulty is that it really does come down to the landowner and as the lease or the land, you're doing your best to bring this in. And I very much get from you that you're putting a lot of effort in and I love your, your side idea. I'm still very disappointed that we don't have agreement from the landowner. That's very tough for me. I'm really disappointed about that. This is a critical location and I think connecting those trails is important.
I guess I would again highlight that this doesn't end that. It hopefully provides some optionality here.
Right. But it ends our involvement.
It ends our involvement. What does that mean?
Well, I think the city.
When is the landowner going to suddenly come up and say, you know what?
If not now.
I think if the city, you know, or the state had a bucket of funds and said, look, we would buy this property and we'll own it and we'll turn it into what we want it to be. You know, that puts a bit more on, on the city to think about a conservation acquisition, but that's also part of your plan, right? To think about the most important properties and to think about how you acquire them. This isn't acquiring an easement, a conservation easement or CR or fee. It's, it's sort of finessing, you know, a 20- or 30-year trail easement. And then what? You know, once folks get used to this and pull out the solar and then you're going to take away that access, I think you have an issue. So, I think there's actually an opportunity here for the city to think about putting its money where its mouth is here as much as possible.
Well, I think, I mean, I don't mean to jump in, but I mean, you know, there's a couple of things in the memo that I attempt to articulate that the owner has chosen to enter into the lease agreement for solar. If this were a residential subdivision, we would be having the same conversation.
Right.
And if it were an open space residential development with more density and housing.
You'd have people living in there.
We'd be having this conversation because it's codified. I think what, what, what we're looking at is the general novelty of solar being, you know, brought into communities at a rapid pace and municipalities are always behind the curve. the curve. So, I think that there is a way to make the connection to talking about this. I think there's a couple provisions in the ordinance that give the planning board at least a discussion piece. What I think would be extremely useful is if we could articulate the landowner's acceptance of kind of the program that you laid out and include it in this permission, then I think, then I think we at least have something sort of worthy of sort of discussing as a future element of the project.
Something in writing, an agreement of some kind of formal process, what we're talking about.
Yeah, because I think it is, I think that there is an element of it which would accomplish some of the target goal.
Right.
With at least the framework for the owner's willingness to go forward with some kind of educational opportunity, twice a year or something like that. And I think that that would be...
Gall was totally on board with that idea and wasn't threatened by it. So, I think this is where we have to find some common ground.
Would a condition, I mean, for that component of it, I'm still, I'm not sure if that's enough. I mean, it has to be enough, but this hurts me, but would a condition accomplish that goal? Just putting a condition that that access for student access would be provided as opposed to having them come back with something written, which would force them out another meeting? And you hear what I'm saying, Jeff?
Yes, I know. Yes, that makes sense to me. I mean, we, I want to be as sympathetic as possible. I mean, we've, like, I'd like to hear analogy to rewind the tape. I mean, you know, this, this concept was presented to the applicant many, many months ago and it's not until now that we're seeing something material for discussion. So, you know, kicking it out, another meeting to get something from the Galls, a willingness...
At least memorializing what they're doing.
This is where we ended up with the, with the former project is...
It took time, yeah.
I think that there would, I think it would be certainly, it appears to be, barring public input, one of the last things to kind of accomplish.
Right. And I, and I don't mean to say this, anything with Beacon Solar, but like, it, it, it feels a little hard to have had months of meetings, right? And it hasn't been brought up. And then coupled with clocks ticking, this is all we can offer, like, it just feels like a last minute kind of disappointment and not really time to engage in real discussion about it.
Well, I think we did, we did raise this earlier. This isn't the first time we've been talking about trying to provide some limited access with and discussing with the landowner.
Right. And I, and we know, we put you in a, in the middle position where you're talking to the landowner, but that's also, this is the context of a project that is taking away some of the natural resources in East Hampton. And so, that's one of our considerations and one of the ways that we've sort of mitigated that in the past is some public access. And, you know, that may not be something that happens across the country, but it's certainly something that we've had success with. So, I guess, why don't we open everything up to the public first and see if other people have comments or questions? Folks, comments, questions?
We haven't addressed water issue.
Can you, can you come up to the...
I really have.
All right, I'll allow it. Speak loudly.
Just the water issue. I know the Conservation Commission, but it's still a concern. I don't know if there's some way you could put this, if this goes through, if something happens to our home, how are we protected? My biggest concern is the water.
And the, well, the water, that's an existing problem that you currently have, right?
It is not an existing problem in our home. If there is more water dumped into our backyard, it will be in our home.
Yeah, so the, based on the panels, is that what your thought is?
Yeah, because they're going to be putting pylons, they're going to be pushing water, they're going to be pushing water into the, into the wetlands. That's backing up, we sit in that lowland. You guys saw it.
Yeah.
You needed to see it in a wet time.
But so the...
And it's just, I, it's a big concern.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, if it happens, it's too late for us. They have their project, we do not have a home. My daughter lives in our basement with her three children. Tell them where they're going to live when I got a basement full of water.
Yeah, so I mean, the thing, the engineering with the panels is really...
I understand, I understand, but I'm still skeptical. And if it's a problem, where do I go? Who's going to solve my problem?
We take all these comments very seriously and have, but, and that, and that's why it went through such a stringent vetting process. But the end of the day, having passed, I mean, really, I'm not sure where I could look for something else in there to dig deeper into it.
My recourse against the city, against this project and against the landowner. And I am speaking to an attorney.
What is your recourse?
What will be my recourse?
I mean, it'll depend on what exactly is happening. I mean, if it's, it's, if it's a...
I don't think there is one.
Unique weather event.
Ask if you want.
Insurance.
Well, no, I mean, people get flooded all the time, right? I mean, it's happening right now and so...
It is not, we do not have flood. We do not have a problem. You, if you allow this project to go through...
Well, you're not saying that it will happen.
No, no, I did not say that.
Okay.
I said, if it happens, what is my recourse? We do not have an issue with flooding in our home. If this project occurs and we then have flooding, it's the project. What's our recourse?
I mean, you have to talk to a lawyer about that.
I am.
Okay.
Well, my advice is, I mean, is to try to speak to an attorney and try to work on documenting your existing conditions as well as possible and then, because I think, there's, there's only one analogy that's popping in my head, it's not a good one, but if someone becomes ill due to some other unknown reason, it's, you know, making that link is one of the hardest things to do. I mean, I think that the planning board has limited jurisdiction in this case, the Conservation Commission had some. Those are the processes that the city has established for this type of question, but just establishing your, your existing conditions in a way that might allow you to compare to something in the future, that's, that's something that would be difficult for this board to do, but it might be something you can do.
Do it quite a lot. Contemplate it.
Right. And I think, again, I think establishing your existing conditions is going to be one of the critical things.
And for the record, that's not legal advice.
That's not a legal advice. I am not an attorney.
I am, and I'm not going to give any legal advice.
Brad may be able to comment, but, you know, our biggest hurdle with the Conservation Commission was convincing them that, and making adjustments to the project frankly, that would preserve the existing conditions.
I unfortunately wasn't able to be there due to my accident, so...
I'm sorry about that.
No, it's fine, but I wish I missed all that. So, unfortunately, I wasn't able to be a part of that and that's our biggest concern. And you have to understand, it's our home. It's our life. You're, you're a business, you, it happens, you walk away. It's our life. It's my daughter lives there with her children. And I don't think anybody can say that it's not going to happen.
Brad, anything you want to say in terms of stormwater? I mean, we really kind of went through the gauntlet with the Conservation Commission here.
Yeah.
Again, we're well aware of the existing conditions, that's why we're not changing the culverts. So, the drainage issues you have, you explained when there was a flooding in your backyard flooded last summer, I think it was.
Every summer.
Every summer.
Yeah.
That will continue to happen, so this isn't going to ameliorate that.
Right.
And we have to be careful here that if you have another flood and it's a big rain event, we're not blaming the solar, but you're, you're going to document your existing conditions just as we have done. I presume if you're able to find some causality and it's flooding your basement, you know, you have cause, you know? I mean, if you can, if you can draw the connection that somebody or something is harming you, you know, flooding your basement. But I, again, this project has been designed from the get-go and Brad has explained to preserve the site as it is. And that means the wetlands.
Yeah.
The wetlands are your sponge. And actually, that's another argument for the willows because they will take up water. There are no trees now.
Any other comments or questions from the public? I gotta make you come up, sorry. You're fit and able-bodied.
Kenneth Hall, just he was on Orange Road, you see him stay here. About the willow trees, who is going to maintain those?
The owner of the system maintains the site.
Because we call them widowmakers. We got next door neighbor every year during the winter or a heavy rain, that tree could only take so much and they start breaking very gently. And my other question is, what kind of equipment are you going to be putting in the back? I mean, you're going to be bringing those panels in...
Yes.
With what kind of equipment?
We have a laydown area. I'm not going to, just plan to...
Just let's switch to the mic, please.
I'm just asking Brad out loud if the equipment, the panels come in on semis, but you're probably going to have a sequence of unloading that to the laydown area.
Yeah.
Do you know if the relieving slab will handle the larger trucks? Will we downsize and then move in?
Yeah.
Probably should handle the big stuff.
Yes, I'm not sure exactly what the question is, but...
You want to know what, what trucks or equipment are we using to bring in?
Bring the panels in.
To bring the panels in? Yeah. I think it was discussed at the July meeting that there'd be a couple of eighteen wheelers would come in. And so, that was one of the, one of the things we looked at in analyzing that first culvert. And that's why we have that relieving plan.
But most of that land back there, if you've done any perk test, is a lot of clay. And the more you run over it, the more water that comes up. We had, they had a tractor back there with a stupid hay wagon behind it last year. They couldn't move it because it...
Gets stuck in the clay.
Got stuck in the clay.
We're going to stay on the, on the track.
Well, not only are we staying on the track, but we're also...
Well, I, I live right across the road, so I've been all over the place down there.
Well, we're also putting in an aggregate mix on the surface. So, it's going to be a travel, a usable surface by the vehicles that are being proposed. So, it's, it's not, we're not just running over the ground like they do right now. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
The benefits, we, we, the benefits.
Oh, if this effort goes through and everything is approved, is East Hampton going to benefit from any part of the solar system at all?
That's come up before and I think you told us about the possibility of it, a 10%. Why don't you tell us about that?
Yeah, if you, I'll address that. Two benefits. So, on the energy side, we will be enrolling this program in the community solar program, which Commonwealth has. Means that customers within Eversource can benefit from that project and get a saving. So, they'll be getting solar. And most people who want solar can't put it on the roof for one reason or another. Can't afford it, they don't own the roof, the roof won't handle solar. So, this provides people an option to get the solar energy. And typically, it's a 10 to 15% savings on your current utility bill. So, that's the program that the state has set up. These projects are built to feed into that program. The other real benefit is the payment of taxes. So, we have met with the mayor, I've spoken with the city attorney. He seems to be quite comfortable with our, our understanding of how the city wants to approach this. And it'll mean about a million dollars for the city over 20 years, so about $50,000 in annual income for the city to use as it sees fit for its general purposes. And that's obviously a lot more than it's producing right now. So, the other thing is this system doesn't cost the city in terms of schools, regular emergency services.
Traffic even.
Traffic, right. So, unlike, you know, Jeff mentioned, if this were a subdivision, you'd have all those services in there and you'd be exacting all sorts of concessions to make it all work and protect your tax base, right? In this case, you're getting basically a million dollars for the city plus the energy, very little in the way of cost of services.
With regard to that 10 to 15% you mentioned, is that something the individual consumer in East Hampton will have to apply for or is that just done to residents in there?
Yeah, you would, you would basically participate in the program. So, it's a, whether you're a business or an individual with a Eversource bill, you would have the opportunity to subscribe to the system up to the amount of his own use.
So, the individual would have to take the action to join this program?
That's right. And there, we will have a partner that's basically going out to the community, trying to sell the shares of this project, if you will. And that's how the community solar is working around the state. Often, these projects have a dedicated part that's for low and moderate income customers. So, there's the carve out there. But we're, we're not there yet. I mean, we have to get this program certified by Masssmart and that's why we're in a little bit of a rush here to do that. But yes, the community solar is a real benefit. And that speaks to the technology here. As I was speaking to the Galls the other day, I said, look, this system is actually really innovative for the city. It will have a battery, you know? No other project has that, not even the one in Millanfield. And it will have bifacial panels. What that means is actually there's PV on the back of this. So, in the winter, when it's reflecting off the snow, you're actually getting about five or 10% additional efficiency off the panels there. So, it's a state-of-the-art system that generates as much as it can from the land footprint that you're allowing us to build on. And it will be powered to, you know, equivalent of 700 homes is the basic math there. So, for a four-megawatt AC system, roughly, you're talking about 700 homes and that's in the application.
Great, thank you.
I found that to be a very good answer.
Any other comments or questions from the public?
For me, it all comes down to the easement.
I mean, so...
I don't think we can hold them up with it. I know, I know you've stated some good reasons why we could.
Well, my thought is this, I mean, I believe our last solar one had 10 to 15 conditions that we haven't even, like, we don't have a draft decision yet. I mean, I'm, I'm wondering if that doesn't make sense on its own to continue that and work on at least, so we have something just to vote on next time.
What are we asking for in terms of the big concession for the easement here? Go back and try again with the landowner? Try and pare this down a little bit and what?
I mean, I, I think it would be very useful to articulate, oh, through, through something from the owner, what they're willing to, what, to describe to the extent that, to what extent would access be granted over the leased area? And I think, I just wanted to make that clear, that the proposal was, so this proposal shows a large parcel of which the road and the solar panels and the road and the solar panels are the leased area, which was really going to be the subject of the easement.
Right.
So, it's not as if the proposal was to allow trapezium across the entire property, was to put it into the leased area.
But it's not enforceable in, in practice. I mean, folks would be going off the trail and it would be on the landowner or the system owner to manage people going off that trail.
Yeah, but that can happen right now.
We just know how this works, right?
I mean, it's, people can go wherever they're going to go illegally anyway. That's not really, I think most people would stay on the trail. They'd be jogging, they'd be on their bikes, they'd be with their kids. They're not going off into tick zones.
I mean, I, I think it's worth it, I do think we're going to need to continue it just to get a decision together and get conditions in place. I mean, I, I would say that it's worth it to use that time to reiterate our interest in a trail easement and if not, have them, you know, put something in writing about what they are willing to offer as far as protecting, you know, public access to the property.
What do you think would make it easier to get the landowner to give us a path through?
But I, we'll say, there's some risk here. I mean, where we kind of go off on these amenity ideas, there's risk for this project potentially, you know, with the Masssmart program, there's already a waitlist of projects. And so, if we go down this path, you're going to have potentially no access, a very angry landowner who doesn't have a solar system. And I, that's a real risk, you know, if this goes on and on and we're trying to perfect something that...
I mean, I don't, I don't think we can get a decision out tonight. I mean, like, we, I just don't think we can put together a decision to vote.
Is this the only outstanding item so far? I mean, we've covered a lot of water here.
I personally would say so. I mean, I think it sounds like we've covered the screening, in my opinion. I mean, I don't know how everyone else feels about that, but I think that these issues have all been addressed. I think we even have, I think even the decommissioning.
I think we've covered it, we got through it. This is the last.
Respectfully, I would ask that we say something to the effect of, at a minimum, we're allowing for public access for educational purposes to be formalized and try to do something more. But I, again, the landowners are fairly clear with us. I do understand the backstory with the other one. This project has stayed away from requiring concessions. We've designed the system to stay out of these buffers and Brad's done a great job of taking all this input so that, you know, again, it's a more environmentally light project, but it also, you know, avoids this sort of trading game here, right? We are really trying to accommodate a few things here. And even if we're not allowing public access, we are in essence stabilizing the majority of this property as habitat, which is also clearly articulated as a value. Check out?
You said you, this process, the waiting, what's the deadline?
As soon as possible.
That's not a deadline.
Well, I, we were hoping to get this tonight so that we could put the certification into Masssmart by the end of the week.
So, if you're hoping, if you're hoping to get it tonight, what, to what extent have you had conversations with the Gall about the, what, what extent of your leased area did you discuss allowing access over for educational purposes?
He's comfortable with us using the entirety of the...
You said inside.
Area for education because then you're...
You said even inside the fence?
Inside the fence.
Hard hats.
That's right. You know, so you're unlocking the gates and you're teaching students about solar.
And you said it would be escorted.
Would have to be escorted there.
By, by the landowner?
Well, the system operator would be opening it and it would, those would be small groups getting in there, you know, to see the system. I think we have to respect the property rights here too. I mean, I totally understand what you're, what you're getting at here, but in the interest of moving forward and trying to find a balanced approach, which is what the master plan shoots for, I, I think this gives us a way to build some goodwill with the family.
I mean, I, I definitely hear that and there's definitely, I mean, it's private property, right? But it's still a public process. It's, you know, we're tasked with being, you know, considerate of minimization of, you know, clearing and impact on private property or open space. And I mean, I think that that's, I mean, if, if that's, what, if what they're willing to offer is the educational process, then that's fine. I just think that, I mean, since we do need to continue this to get the decision together to vote on anyway. I just think it's worth it, you know, to ask you to throw them one more request and see what they say.
Because it sounds like if something can be put together to articulate how that would work a little bit. And some of the parameters that you described would want to be in place with the idea that it would cover the leased area. Facilitated in some manner, um, twice a year. Um, it sounds like you've fulfilled the requirements to get the special permit issued at the next meeting, which would be September seventeenth. Which should still be viewed as an accomplishment, I think.
Right, I mean, I think we can have a decision with draft conditions ready to go and, you know, basically what we've talked about. And then I think, um, you know, with just that blank to fill in. And if, if that's the best we can do, that's the best we can do. But I just, it, I, I would just say, if we're gonna have to continue it anyway, I would just ask you to.
Yeah, I understand.
Just try one more time and we'll see what happens.
You know, again, maybe the leverage is, look, we're almost there.
Right.
What more can we do here, but I.
And I apologize, I mean, typically, we wouldn't have had to wait this long to even get this one started tonight. We had a, like, the matter before that you got to sit through, so.
Again, I like that the, the open space plan has a, a lot of great ideas in it. Not every conservation project maximizes everything that you want in that, um, in that cheeseburger. And in this case, you know, we're making some trade-offs potentially between public access and protecting wildlife habitat. Pretty, pretty sensitive bear habitat that doesn't want a lot of people around, doesn't have a lot of people now. Protecting the water quality, you have a lot of dogs, dogs don't stay on the trail, you know that and they poo everywhere. So I'm just thinking about, looking at the totality of what we're trying to do here and balancing, as the plans suggest. You know, harmonious, as harmonious as possible outcome. Well, we will push harder.
Boy, and I would encourage you not to, I would encourage you not to push too hard because it sounds like, I mean, what you presented as having had conversations with them. And their agreement to the concept, I think also reaches agreement with the planning board.
If we can codify that into something, yeah.
Yeah, and I'd say, we've had numerous conversations with the Skama Conservation Trust as well.
Yeah.
I spoke with a board member on Friday and they're not, Marty Klein was not uncomfortable with his idea.
Right, yeah. Right, that's great.
We all would like more, but we've done our diligence here, every which way, to try to get what you're looking for.
I think it's good. I mean, I, I, I just would say, I mean, I wasn't aware of any of that progress. And there's nothing in writing to, to suggest that you've made it that far. So I think that would be the final.
Understood.
Accomplishment to seek is to get something that is manageable. So I think what we want to have, again, I just want to articulate, this is, this is creating the opportunity. And that's, this is land that's gonna go into this use for twenty years. So this is, the city's time to try to establish the opportunity. And I think it sounds very positive what you articulated. And I think if we can set it up so it's a system that we could put into play without sort of us in place. Someone else could do this.
It is. And, and you said, not, not to push too hard, but definitely try to have one more conversation with the owner. You know, we were in this precise position with the last project, down to the wire. We'd gone through several meetings, we really hammered it out and things were looking good, but this is just something that's critical to us in East Hampton. We're building these connections and these are rare opportunities that we're getting to put these paths through. And, and, you know, East Hampton residents pick up their dog poo FYI. I think that it's, it's just worth it to give one more attempt because it's such a rare and critical opportunity to provide a path system for the whole community's benefit. That's tremendous. And I think you're actually a believer. I really do.
Totally. I mean, if I could have, this would have been resolved a long time ago if it was.
Somewhere, there's a way with the landowner. It, it may be it's even paring this down a little bit, but come to that next meeting with a way.
Alright, so.
Jim, I might just turn this back on you. I know we're late, but, you know, again, putting some capital on the table makes a difference. In any conservation recreation, um, project, particularly when you've got a resistant landowner.
Our planning board budget is so limited. We don't have an acquisition, property acquisition.
The Kestrel Land Trust has been in conversation with the Skama. I mean, at some point, folks have to sort of think about, what, what are we willing to pay?
Yeah.
Well, see, this is.
For this access.
Yeah, you know, what, what we would pay for this property, if, if the city were ever given an opportunity, we're probably full market value. So what, what I feel has not been given is a chance for the city to acquire this. So the property owner has never approached anyone to buy valuable open space. And so we're forced to deal with it in a special permit proceeding. And so this is an attempt. If the property owner wants to talk about an acquisition at full market value, then we'd probably have a discussion.
We're gonna have that conversation by the.
I realize that. And that's where I, I feel.
You definitely see interested in the idea.
Plant the seed, please.
Alright, so September seventeenth, is that our next meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Can I get a motion to continue?
I motion to continue the public hearing to September seventeenth for, uh.
Beacon Solar.
Beacon Solar, thank you. Where is my agenda?
Thank you.
Alright, uh, can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, uh, that's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.